Good afternoon, welcome to the January 5th Grand County School Board.
Work session, reorganization meeting slash work session. First, I'd like to take a vote on that, uh, where is Tim? He's gone.
Can you say your...
I think he's here.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, but I just wanted to try to...
I'm here.
All right, I tell you, first we'll call the roll and then we'll allow Tim to join.
Okay. Works for me.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Butzer?
Here.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Here. And we have to take a vote to allow that, uh, Tim will, Tim is joining us electronically. So, we're glad, we're glad he's doing better after his bout. And, uh, Tim, we're, we're happy to have you here with us today, even though it's not...
Thank you.
Even though it's not in person.
I guess we need a motion for that. I'd like to make a motion to allow Mr. Greenway to attend, uh, virtually and participate in the meeting.
Second. Motion and second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Butzer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenway?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Morat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir, Tim. Uh, now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And at this point, we are having our reorganization of the board meeting to elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk of the board, and deputy clerk. So, we'll begin by asking for nominations for chairman for the 2021 year.
Make the nomination of Mr. Butzer.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll ask, uh, the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Butzer?
Abstain.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morat? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
And now, we'll ask for nominations for vice chairman.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like, that's me. Uh, I'd like to nominate, uh, vice, uh, Mr. Mike Ray as vice chairman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Roberson to call the roll.
Mr. Butzer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Abstain.
And then, I would also like to make a recommendation that Angela Roberson be named clerk of the board, and Cindy Purdue be named deputy clerk.
So moved.
My second, second.
We'll call off the roll.
Mr. Butzer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morat? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, thank you all for, uh, giving me the chance to represent you as, as, as chairman. I really appreciate that, and I'll work hard to maintain your confidence. Uh, let's move on with, um, item 2.02, Establishment of Meeting Dates, Places, and Time. And who has that?
We, we had received that and made any changes.
Okay.
I think, uh, if it has any changes since then.
All right, fine, so, any, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the, uh, meeting dates as, uh, as were presented.
Which are published on...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just one quick note. I do know that Mr. Linden and myself will not be at the January 14th meeting, and that is fine if everybody's okay with it. But if there's a date, we could go to the 12th to make it so there, that would be great. If not, it's fine.
I would not be around the 12th either, but if you want to change that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, is this something that, can we approve the meeting as is? And if we need to reschedule next Thursday, can we do that at a, you know, outside of a meeting, you know, so that we're not taking up...
Yeah, Mr. Morat, I think that's a good idea. We, we can approve the schedule and do like we've done in the past, but, but my view is that I'd like to have all board members present at board meetings and, but, and I think that, especially the first one of the year, right? Um, so, I, I'm, I'm in favor of accommodating both, uh, Mr. Greenway and Mr. Linden to make, make a change, and we can work that out with Angela sending some emails out looking for dates and options, okay?
So, I'll move to...
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the existing, uh, meeting dates that are currently published online.
I guess we need to approve it?
Yeah.
Mr. Butzer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, according to the agenda, it says here recess, but I guess we can make that recess very brief, correct?
Right.
We're in recess, and now we're at a recess. All right. Uh, item number four, uh, this is 4.01, Athletics Update, Discussion Concerning Mental Health in Athletes, Superintendent Nicely and Dr. Segal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, um, kick off, uh, the discussion. Um, as the board is aware, um, you know, uh, we presented a, a plan for, uh, athletics, you know, following the VHSL, um, guidelines, you know, the sports seasons were, uh, moved across the state, and so, uh, we're currently in the middle of winter sports season, and that goes through middle of about February, and then we have, uh, the fall season kind of interposed in there, uh, starting about the, uh, about the first of February. And so, uh, working with our local health department and, uh, the recommendations from Dr. Morrow from the health department, uh, we established guidelines following health, health department metrics in terms of, um, you know, how those would be done, in terms of practices and sports. Um, uh, we did have a call this morning again with, uh, the health department and talked about the, you know, the options and so forth. The health department, um, you know, is still, uh, very much recommending that we stick with those guidelines. Um, you know, I can't, uh, you know, today in good conscience recommend that we do anything different than that, uh, but I'm aware that there are also, you know, other issues, and one of the conversations that we've had is, you know, is there a difference between new, uh, winter sports that typically are indoor, close contact, you know, versus outdoor sports? And so, uh, I think there are some further conversations that we're gonna have, uh, with neighboring school districts and so forth in terms of our metrics, and I think the health department is open to those discussions, making those distinctions between the indoor close contact sports and versus the outdoor ones. Um, having said that, I'm also aware that, uh, you know, there is some, uh, desire among board members to, you know, discuss this further, uh, which certainly we are, uh, you know, are eager to hear and would like to help with, and, um, and we have some options dependent upon direction, you know, the board wants to go to, you know, to present to you as options.
Um, members of the board, may, may I suggest that just sort of in keeping with the role of chairman, uh, I do have a lot to say on this topic, and if it's okay, I'd like to go last after hearing everybody else, or if you want me to kick it off, I'll do that as well. All right, looks like folks would like me to kick that off. Is that okay? All right.
How do you want to do it?
Bear with me, this may take a while. I'm sorry. Um, listen, we, we have had, uh, a tremendous amount of input since March from every key stakeholder we have i- in the system. And when I say stakeholders, uh, there are teachers, our staff, um, administration, students, uh, coaches, um, parents concerned about the virus, uh, health department experts. So, this, this board has, has relied since March on, on input, and we pay attention to all the input, believe me, from, from every stakeholder that, that has an interest in, in, and how we're, how we're conducting our instruction and, and, and also sports. One of the things that I think that this system has done very well on and with is, is making sure that we've protected the health of our students and, and staff, um, and, and parents with respect to that as well, is that we have paid attention to the science with respect to this virus. And we have focused, a- and I think very successfully, on mitigating the spread of this virus, uh, in the school system. If you look around at, at other school systems, you'll find that we have more kids in in-person instruction than in anybody in the surrounding area, and we're constantly making plans to add more people back in the buildings with instruction. As a matter of fact, I think you're gonna hear, uh, some about that today. So, I, I feel very good about, about the health aspects. Now, my position, it's probably pretty widely known since day one, is that, that I, I would never deviate from the recommendations of the health department, and, and, and I haven't so far. And there, let's say there were a couple of bookends on board members as to how we should approach going back to school, I was probably on one extreme, some folks were in the middle, uh, of that. So, I've paid attention, uh, to the science. But now, we have had about 10 months of experience, uh, and, and a lot of knowledge, and listening to all the experts, and I personally have learned some things. I, what I've learned is that, that, uh, that, that kids see each other socially, uh, they play travel sports, uh, they seem to do very well when they, when they contract the virus. Uh, I know both, uh, one of my children, um, the virus ripped through her college dorm, they all had colds for a few days, and they seemed to, to do fine. So, so I, I believe that, that, that teenagers, uh, do very well with it if they, if they get it. And I also do know that while they're not doing these things in school, we know that we're, they're playing sports and they're doing other things. Uh, so, we know that, that, that's for sure. And, but one of the things that, that I've really started to pay attention to, and it's taken a while, uh, is that there is a mental health aspect to all of this. I mean, we can all, we're, we're all tired of being, um, cooped up in our homes, we're all tired of what this virus has done to our social lives and everything else, but I s- I suspect that it, it's done a heck of a lot more damage, uh, to, to our students, especially to students who use sports and physical activity as an outlet or some way to reduce and relieve stress. And so, so I've evolved, and I think I've gotten to the point where I think that we should allow, uh, some competition, uh, in Roanoke County, uh, to allow kids to play, and that we need to, to figure out how to do that as safely as possible. And I'll just throw a few ideas out. For example, um, no one can argue that adding more people in a building together, uh, lowers the risk of virus spread. I mean, it, it, it's going to increase the risk. So, what we need to do is, is to mitigate that risk, and how do we do that? Well, I, I might suggest that we have no spectators that we can spread the virus to. Uh, that, and also that we, um, uh, allow sports and allow coaches to decide if they want to do this or not. Those coaches who decide they're concerned about the spread of virus, we wouldn't force them to do it, but I think where I have, I have, where my view has changed is that we should do something to allow our kids, uh, to play sports. But, but here's also what I know, is that I know that there, there are certain people who would never approve a plan like this. I know Dr. Morrow, uh, wouldn't, wouldn't approve a plan like this, and why would she? Why would she ever approve something that might add to some risk of, of the spread to, of, of the virus? I also know that consistent with, with everything, um, Dr. Nicely has told us, how could he in good conscience, uh, approve a plan that would allow us to do this? But I think at the end of the day, the five of us are the decision makers, we take all the input, we, we draw some conclusions, and, um, at the end of the day, it's our decision to make based on all the best input we have, and live with the consequences of making that decision. So, I'll turn it over to somebody else.
This, yeah, yeah, certainly, thank you. I echo a, a lot of what, you know, of what Chairman Butzer said, I've evolved a, a, a little bit. Um, I'm, you know, I'm certainly open to some sort of, of compromise. It's, I mean, you know, my belief shouldn't be any secret, you know, I feel like for the last six to seven weeks, I said I'd be open to some sort of, you know, athletic competition, but, yeah, I think it needs to stay in-house, you know? Um, you know, our high schools play to each other, I'm not a, I couldn't support, you know, at this point in time, playing out of district, um, you know, but there's also a lot of questions, uh, you know, that, that I don't think we're gonna have the answer to after today. You know, for one, I mean, where are we, where are we drawing the line? Which sports? Um, you know, I mean, you know, how could we possibly consider, you know, um, uh, wrestling for one, you know? This is just my opinion, you know, but also, what are we doing with, uh, you know, we certainly can't, I don't know how we could have an indoor track season, 'cause there's no place for them to run. Um, I mean, that's coming from several administrators, um, and A.D.s, and, you know, so, are we just talking basketball? Are we, you know, I mean, do we have, uh, what are, what are we doing with cheerleading? Um, you know, are we gonna allow cheerleaders at, at games? Um, so, and I know we're just talking winter sports right now, but, you know, we also have about three weeks until fall sports start, you know? Um, uh, football, uh, if I'm not mistaken, football and cheer, competition cheer... Football, if I'm not mistaken, football and cheer, competition cheer, can start practicing February the fourth. And football games, I guess technically could start February the 22nd. So cross-country, February 15th, competitions start in March 1st. Golf and volleyball, 2:15 with competitions starting March the 1st, you know. And then what do we do about JV? You know, I know JV girls' basketball, right now there's only two high schools that can field a team, if I'm not mistaken, Hidden Valley and Glemberg. So are we gonna, does that mean we're pulling, does that open the door for a ton of eighth graders to come try out for JV in order to fill the team? So, and then are we just talking about high school sports? I mean, this is where I talk about compromise. Whatever we decide, we, I mean, I know we're not going to make everybody happy. If we, you know, open the door a little bit for some sports and just allow competition at the high school level and amongst our, you know, schools at Roanoke County, there's going to be people that aren't happy with that. They say you're not going far enough, you know, and then there's going to be people that say you're going too far. You know, but I'd like to be able to come up with some sort of middle, you know, of middle ground, you know. You know, with JV, for instance, you know, JV basketball, you know, the JV kids usually stick around and watch the varsity game. Are we eliminating that? I mean, who's paying for this? You know, we have transportation costs, you know, even if we're playing within the county, you know, who's footing that bill? We know that our high schools don't have the revenue from sports like they normally do, they're not going to be collecting ticket prices. You know, so where's the money coming from? So, I mean, these are just questions that I have and, you know, I'd like to have a good answer before, you know, I make any final decision, you know. But I'm certainly not on board for just, you know, waving a wand and saying, you know, we're going to have sports like we have in years past, you know. You know, if we do come up with something, I think we need to make sure we're taking care of our, you know, at minimum, our high school students who, you know, are going to be graduating, you know, and give them some sort of opportunity. You know, it's not a decision I take lightly, you know. I've wrestled with it, I've, you know, haven't gotten much sleep in the last couple of days because, yeah, I know whatever decision we decide, I know there's going to be, you know, people on both sides who aren't happy with us. So, and, you know, I guess that is what it is, right? So, thank you.
I too have wrestled with this and many of the things that Mr. Butzer said make a lot of sense. However, it's, it was at our work session in December when Mr. Butzer sat here and told us about Mr. Ray's struggles on Thanksgiving and being alone in the hospital on Thanksgiving, not sure if he was going to live and that lonely feeling. We've got a board member out today with COVID who mentioned to me yesterday, he felt like he'd been hit by a Mack truck. And I think we've been wildly successful in the schools because we've listened to the health department and we followed Dr. Morrow's advice and Dr. Odell's advice. And I love sports. All my boys played sports, I've been involved with sports for the majority of my life. I know the importance of sports in a lot of children's lives, but I don't think the time is right for us to be making a decision that impacts the community at this point like this decision could. Three times in schools, actually no, excuse me, four times in schools who have tried this have already had to suspend their seasons. And I'm not against, well, I say I'm not against trying, I don't think the time is right for indoor sports for us to try right now. Badatot just announced their girls' basketball team, what were they, two days? Two days worth of practice and now they've had to suspend. Part of me says it shouldn't just be for the athletes. If we're going to extend this, I know the mental health of not only our drama students and band students and everybody else is equally as important as our athletes. So I don't know why we would play favorites with our athletes over all our student body. And the transmission rates in the community, just it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for me to think that this is a wise idea at the moment. Professional sports have tried and they can't seem to control this. Collegiate sports have tried and they haven't seemed to be able to control it. And they've got access to all the resources in the world as far as daily testing and contract tracing. It, I don't know what would make us think, and obviously we don't think we can control it, but if it spreads and this has been the cause of additional community spread, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me at this time to at least follow with indoor sports. I like Dr. Nicely's thought of some outdoor sports maybe in the spring, whether that be starting with our fall sports, which are outdoor, and then the spring sports. Those students missed an entire season last year, but, and I get it, people want to play, kids want to play. We drove past, what were 60, 75 children out there, they want to play. We want you to play. But it's, I had a friend that was getting married over New Year's Eve and they wanted to have a big wedding, but it was family, 20 people. A very important day for them, they couldn't do it. They got married with just 20 people. It just, I don't see, it doesn't make sense to me at the moment. That's all I have.
Okay. You know, I think everyone, you know, we've wrestled with this idea and what we may do, how could we do it? I think we all, you know, or we all feel like that it is something that, are we gonna, is there a place to start some, something at least or not? I do like Mr. Moret's ideas on, there are a lot of questions we need answers to in order to make, you know, make the full decision. I'm not, I'm in favor of something that we could do. I just want to make sure that we go into it in an organized manner and not in, okay, go back and we'll say, okay, go on back to this particular program. And, you know, I'd like to see that, you know, I know that the mental health aspect, it's really, you know, affecting, you know, we're probably better than a lot of districts as far as the program that we have and trying to have the kids in school than a lot of areas where they haven't been to school at all. They've been virtual all the time. And, you know, we, you know, if you look at some of the travel sports, they seem to be still going and still having their competition. You know, I'd like to see us have the competition, I'd like to see us doing something as we move forward. But as Mr. Moret said, there are some questions that we need to go into it knowing these answers and being able to be organized as we move forward without just making that decision and then saying, oh, I wish we would have done this, you know. And I think, I think that's some things that, questions that we need answered. But, you know, I still, we need to, you know, we need to do something. We need to see what we can do and how we can move forward with this because I think it's important. And we need to start somewhere. So, anyway, I, you know, I would certainly support something that, once we get some more answers on how it would be organized, how it would go, how it would, you know, competition within our own schools rather than going outside being an issue that we can, we're controlling our aspect of how we're handling the COVID virus as far as Roanoke County schools. And we're trying to mitigate it as much as possible. We might not know what another district is doing. So I think, you know, the safest aspect would be that we would do that, be able, you know, possibly be able to do that. So, you know, I think if we get the answers, then we can make a decision.
Mr. Green, may I?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sure everybody kind of knows where I stand. But I think it's important to bring up the fact that we are unique in that we have five schools in our system, whereas a lot of these other counties may only have one or two high schools in their counties. So I think that makes us unique, that we can't control the environments if we want to play, enter county. And I like Mr. Linden's comment about band and choir or what other clubs there may be. I do think these kids need this out, they need these outlets, you know. It's very, very important. And so as I said here, a product of COVID, everybody knows that, I still don't think, I think you have to take the whole child. And do they get it? You know, we've been listening to Dr. Morrow and different ones for the last six or eight months on, you know, the spread, how they get it, so forth. And I think there's less chance for them and they're participating in other ways now. The kids I feel the worst for are the kids that can't pay for travel sports, don't have the outlet that maybe high schools can provide. So, you know, I appreciate everyone's position. I have no problem with anyone voting for or against what we're talking about. I appreciate the change in position or the evolution of positions by some. And, you know, I think we can do this and I think we should. So, you know, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me suggest something to see if I can try and move this thing along. First, I believe there's some time sensitivity here on when we make a decision. Dr. Nicely, can you speak to that? Is that if, when we need to make a decision within a week? Because if not, there's some consequences with respect to getting ready and being able to play. So why don't you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it'd be helpful for all the board members just to kind of fill in some blanks in terms of what possibilities and options are. I know Dr. Segal's been working really hard, talking with, you know, high school principals and athletic coordinators, you know, just kind of, you know, feel out some options and possibilities. You've all have raised some questions that I think that, you know, would need to be answered. So, you know, I'm hearing two different things that probably need to be discussed. One would be, and I'll go back to my opening comment, that is, I think that there's definitely a willingness on the part of, you know, the health department to go back in terms of upcoming outdoor seasons and so forth, to definitely revisit, you know, some of the decisions around that. So I'll start off by saying that. I think that, you know, that's one thing that, you know, Dr. Segal and I will be working on as far as working with them as well as other divisions to kind of, you know, look at that some more. But to Mr. Butzer's point, the immediate decision in terms of winter sports, since we're already sort of in that season, if the desire on the board is to do something around that, then yes, time would be of essence in terms of looking at some options. And so I think Dr. Segal actually has some options to consider. There's actually a model that just came out of Virginia Beach that might be useful in terms of looking at some of that. So I'll let her, if it's okay with the chairman, talk us through, you know, what some possibilities might be. And that might help to start to fill in some of the blanks, you know, regarding some of the questions, you know, various board members have raised.
If I might, just before you get started, and maybe a lot of the questions that were raised here, it's filling in the details and sort of building the watch. What I'd like to accomplish if we could is have a framework of what we think we agree to as a group. Let staff fill in the blanks and the dots and come up with, you know, and answers to all our questions.
Chuck, are you able to get Tim a copy of this?
On Board docs.
Oh, you got it on Board docs?
Yeah.
All right, I didn't know if she...
You're saying it is on Board docs?
It's under executive content.
Let's see.
Meanwhile, while you're looking for that, I'll just, and tell me if I have this right. It sounds like there's consensus on this board to move ahead with some sort of a plan, even though it may not be the plan that would be approved by Dr. Morrow, to head, to go ahead with some sports. That I think is where we are with consensus on a framework of what we want to do. Right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I know, all right. So we have consensus to do that. And so that helps a little bit, doesn't it? Even though we realize it's not something the health department's going to approve. We get that. And so can we develop a framework that would allow us to play winter sports and spring sports to some degree and mitigate as best we can?
Right. So just to kind of get a start, I know Dr. Segal's going to kind of build that framework a little bit. It's important, I think, to understand just the dates of the V H S L approved, you know, winter season, what feedback she's gotten from the schools if something like this were to occur, you know, what kind of lead-in time would be needed in terms of practicing, what kind of rules and protocols would we agree on and putting that into place? I know we have some recommendations and thoughts about that, which also gives us some time to see, you know, what happens when you, you know, allow some of this. We've heard reports of some things already shutting down when you try some. And then in terms of when the window for any competitions might take place, you know, she can describe that, so.
Okay, all right. So when we take a look at the winter sports season, we're already in the middle of that. So if, when we're looking at the calendar, we're really only working with, if we want our teams to advance to region opportunity play, that would be February 8th. So if we are going to allow that opportunity, then we only have four weeks to work with. So in order to, if that is our goal, to get our athletes to that region date, then the best idea would, we would need to start right away. So meaning tomorrow, if we were to start and go to in-season practice, meaning, keep in mind, our athletes have only been doing phase two, so they have not even shared a ball before. So all they've been doing is conditioning and drills. So phase three is sharing of a ball where you have two or three athletes sharing one ball. So it's still not five-on-five, let's give, just use basketball as an example, it's still not five-on-five basketball. So we would have to move into in-season play, meaning that our athletes would need to have some time playing the full sport at full speed. And I really think we need to have the, the V H S L has placed an eight-day required practice limit on that. The reason for that is for safety of the athletes, to make sure they're well-conditioned and ready to go. I really do think we need to adhere to that because our athletes have not been going at full speed. So I really think we need to keep that in mind and give them that, those eight days. So if we were to start tomorrow, that would run us through the 14th. That 14th is a Thursday, beginning on that Friday, we could start competition. That would give us three full weeks of opportunities for our teams to play each other.
May I ask you a question, Dr. Segal?
Sure.
When you say competition, with whom?
Well, and that's one question. One of these plans is for us to play just Roanoke County schools and the other plans is if we decide to follow the district schedule.
So you'll have a timeline for both?
Mm-hmm, yes. So if we, we will have three weeks to get competitions in. We usually don't recommend more than three games a week, you know, just for athlete safety. So we would of course like to spread those out. So we could get several games in depending on how the schedule works. And then when we hit February 8th, we could then determine whether we are wanting our kids to move on to regional play. That would include that they would be traveling and going to other schools and playing, you know, the other teams that they have matched up with. One thing to keep in mind about this timeline, if we wait and do not start competition until the 16th or that, let's see, the, yeah, the 15th, that means that is exactly three weeks since Christmas and the holidays. So that's going to give us a good picture of, everybody keeps saying that we're anticipating that the numbers are going to go up with COVID. That gives us a really good look of what that's going to look like, giving us an opportunity to adjust. If we need to pull back, we can, if we can still keep moving forward, that's what we do. The idea of keeping it within Roanoke County gives us more control over it and we can adjust and move more easily without holding other districts. We all have schedules right now, so all these other districts are on our schedules, and we're holding them captive. And they're not allowed to go make, schedule other teams until, you know, we release them.
Yeah, may I ask one, a question? Is there, what would VHSL's position be on us doing competition just among our county?
So they're okay with that because they've said that in their plan that we can adjust however we need to. So even if that means pulling back and scrimmaging just within your team. However, if we play each other within Renoke County, we are all regional VHSL schools. Therefore, the opportunity to get into regions based on a point system, and our regions will allow the point system to to move us forward in region. So playing each other will give us enough games and enough point structure to qualify for regional placement.
Okay. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm not even thinking about regional. I mean, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, honestly, I mean, I know it's competition and, you know, having a having an end goal is nice, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, a a lot of our athletes and a lot of our parents, you know, let them play, you know. And once again, getting back to compromise, you know. Everyone's not going to get exactly what they want. You know, I I would like to focus personally on, you know, building up a season within the county. And, you know, if we make a, need to make a decision, you know, about regionals later, you know, so be it.
Well, I understand. The only, what what Dr. Segal is doing, which I think is good, is that, as I said, we need a lot of pieces to build the watch. She's given us pieces, so we know what the implication is of any decision we make. So I, we're not that far down the road yet that we've decided what we want to do, but it's nice to know what happens with respect to what we decide to do.
Right.
So it's good, good information to have.
Okay.
Should we, should we decide that that regional or state competitions aren't that important? Could we extend those seasons? Would VHSL allow us to say, okay, basketball, or we, could our basketball season go through the end of March?
We would have to, it would not be considered VHSL at that point in time. We'd have to pull back, and it would be, it would have to be Renoke County-related scrimmages because if we're not, if we're not playing to qualify for region, then there's no real sense to be under VHSL. So, you know, we we could do that. The the whole reason of playing VHSL is to get into the region and state competition. So that would be what we were, would be opting for. Now, we have to remember that the winter season and the fall season overlaps. So the winter season, basketball and football, typically our athletes overlap. So if a team is successful in basketball, the kid, the football players who are on that team typically stay with that basketball team for one or two weeks before transitioning after football's already started. So we could do something like that. We could, you know, football's going to start February 4th. Regions are February 8th, right? So there's already a built-in overlap. So if we choose to play longer with basketball, even if it's not region through VHSL, we're still going to start overlapping our athletes. So we just, you know, we need to understand, athletes always are allowed to make that choice. Do you want to stay with the basketball team, or do you want to pull back to football? They're always made that, and that's common, and it's something that happens every year.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think this might be a good time just to remind us in terms of what sports are involved in the winter season, because I think there's a lot of difference among some of the individual sports versus the team sports.
Yes. So we have wrestling, indoor track, and swim, and those are very individually-based. So when you're competing in those sports, there's an individual, of course, state opportunity, region opportunity, and there's a team. So by competing and getting into the region and placement, all of our individuals then become placed as regional and state competitors, as as their individuals. So they can move on individually and compete, but you can't do that unless your team enters the VHSL competition. So if we did, if we decided not to participate in the region and state, there could be some individual state championships we could be taking away from kids.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Clarification. My understanding, you said that if we do compete internally, we would still qualify?
We do, yes.
Okay, I just want to, I mean, if we decided later that we would go into that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Is there, just to clarify a point, because I thought I heard this earlier, is there a a certain minimum number of competitions that you have to do in order to do that?
Some regions do. Three Rivers, I think, has a seven game. You have to have seven games in order, or you're going to be divided by seven games, whether you get seven games or not, and that impacts your placement in the region. So we will be able to get that many games in. So I think we can look at each, each, the the problem with us is we're coming through three districts. So we're having to look at the criteria of, you know, three different districts to determine what they're using as qualifiers. Most of the regions are using a point system. So I know where there was some discussion about this potentially hurting Glenver's placement in region, and it does not, because Glenver would be playing all larger schools if we play Renoke County schools, which actually helps them in the point system, because they they're awarded points for playing a larger school. So in that scenario, it would not necessarily hurt Glenver.
Okay, let me, let me ask, and this is maybe it's because I'm confused. What what's the drop-dead date on when we need, as a board, to give you guys sailing orders? What, and is it by sport, is, or is it all, what's the date? When do you need us to decide?
I think it's all of them, and I think it's today.
It's today?
Yeah, I, I, just to confirm, I, I think, you know, per discussions with the schools and so forth, I mean, if if the will of the board is to go in this direction and and look at some in-county competitions, I think, you know, if that's the direction, then I think it'd be in the students and the schools' best interest to go ahead, at least start the practice phase, and in some cases, choosing of teams, because that hasn't happened in probably at least four of the schools.
That's right.
To go ahead and allow that to start happening. And again, that's also going to give a period of time to kind of see what happens, you know, when we, when we go down this road, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could, one, one thought too, is that if we start basketball later and go into the fall sports season, I think, especially a school like Glenver, I would imagine, is going to have a tough time fielding one or both of those teams, maybe. So I I agree that it's incumbent upon us, if we can, to make a decision today to try and move forward, because that gives, I think we need as much time as possible to have a winter sports season, even if it's a small season, but to have it before you intertwine with fall sports season. Thank you.
And on your, you have some recommendations in terms of what kind of requirements you want to put into place in terms of practicing? Could we go through that?
Yeah. So a couple factors to look at with playing Renoke County schools. One is with the safety protocols, they're all centralized, we're all following the same. And so it's a comfort level there that we know what everybody's following. The other one is the case tracking. Our nurses in our, in Central, we're all on top of that case tracking. So that's another positive for playing Renoke County schools is because we have that information from school to school. When you start working from health to district to health district, it it varies in what they use as their components for tracking, so that would be a little bit complicated. And then it limits the travel, which, of course, CDC and Health Department always talks about limiting the travel. And then, you know, if we play the district, I've put a list there of our districts and our schools. And currently in the Blue Ridge District, Lord Bodatod is the only school that's playing out of that district. We have Northside and William Bird that's in that district. So if we did choose to play district, that Blue Ridge, our schools, would be limited in filling a schedule. If you look at the River Ridge schedule, the only school that's currently playing is Pulaski. Same situation there. Our schools, Cave Spring and Hidden Valley, would have a trouble filling a full schedule. If you look at Three Rivers, they have four schools that are currently playing. So Glenver could play, fill a a full schedule. However, I think, you know, we want to protect all five of our schools, and and if we go down this road, I think we want to make sure that all of our schools have equal opportunity to play games. Some of the requirements we we think are necessary, the mask requirement, I know the VHSL put that out there and then pulled that back. I do, however, think it's still good to keep that in place. There's lots of times during practice and travel and all those different times where they need to be masked up. So I think they, we encourage them, and that's what they, they've been doing it through practice since day one, so it's not new to them, to wear the mask except during competition and play. So for example, in basketball, while the five are out on the floor, they could have their mask off. As soon as they approach the bench, they put the mask back on. So the VHSL has very detailed guidance on each individual sport, and all of our A.D.s and principals have already looked at that. So we kind of have a really good picture of how to move forward with the particulars and the, some of the little things of how to manage this. So I don't think that's going to be a problem, putting that together. We also feel no spectators, because that just adds to, you know, the the transmission aspect. We are working on getting our streaming systems in. I talked to you about Pixalot a couple of board meetings ago. We are in the phase tomorrow. One of the representatives will be here with Jeff Terry. They're actually going to our schools to look to where to put the placements. Within a week, we could possibly have our lines dropped in the five gyms, and we need to work on getting that connected. So there's a poss.
Dr. Segal, may I ask you a, I want a question about, is there any, any possibility that we could, if we allow sports, to do some sort of testing that we haven't done before? Do we have the ability to to get testing, even even if it's a quick test, that that we could routinely test our athletes? I mean, that would kind of add another level of, you know, protection if we were able to do that. Is it, is there any way that that can be, is is it even available?
I can ask. I'm not aware that that's available, but I can ask.
Yeah, because I do know, I do know that there are some schools who are playing who who do test their athletes pretty regularly, and the question is, now, they may be deep-pocketed colleges, I I don't know. And it's just a question is whether or not it's available. It's just another level of security that we might, might have.
Mm-hmm. And we do have, of course, temperature checks, again, for, you know, all people who, officials, coaches, everybody, we we still do all those protocols.
I I just think that recently, there've been more and more of these quickie tests that have, that are out there.
Mm-hmm, you're right.
And it may, you know, they're not totally accurate, but it's better than maybe just a temperature check.
Right. And then another one we would like to recommend is that our athletes not participate on any other sports teams while they're playing on our school team. We've had lots of situations where our kids have been playing travel AAU, wrestling clubs, cheer teams, and they're becoming infected and bringing it back into our school team. So if we're going to go down this road and play Renoke County, I think we need to do everything we can to protect our teams. And I think we would need to ask our athletes to commit to our Renoke County teams.
What would your recommendation be on allowing play outside of our five schools?
I would not recommend it until we get to the region opportunity, because that gives us a, I like the timeframe, because we're anticipating the numbers are going to go up based on the holiday. We will definitely know what that's going to look like by then. So and we'll also know how many teams have been able to survive the season without having quarantines and different exposures. So we'll have a very good picture of what this looks like by the time we get to region. And I think if everything looks good, I would recommend we move forward with region, because I think we we're giving kids opportunities to get those awards and recognitions that that they they've worked their whole lives, some of these kids, to get those honors.
You know, just in just my two cents, sort of as an analogy, what we would be doing here is it's an expandable plan.
Right.
Just like our instruction. So so we start with Renoke County schools only. You guys, you guys put in all the mitigation and build, build the watch, tell us what that looks like. And then as time goes on, it could be expanded, you know, outside of the district. But I, I think maybe the, the first step is to allow it within, within the county. And I tell, I like the idea of the, I mean, this may not be popular, but the, the travel sports issue, because allowing sports within Renoke County does allow the kids who come from families who can't afford to pay travel sports, when you think how expensive that is. So that's why, that's an, if this is about the kids and about allowing them to play, at the end of the day, I know this will be unpopular, I don't care about championships or any of that stuff, I just want the kids to be able to play. And if the other stuff works out, that's a bonus, in my view.
And I might just follow up with that. You know, as far as, you know, you know, if we're going to do this, I think, I think caution is in order, certainly. I think starting slowly, let's see what works, make sure we can do it well. To Mr. Moretz's question earlier, in terms of what levels, I think starting with your varsity sports and and let's really focus on doing it well, would be, you know, certainly our thought, you know, certainly the in-county play to start off with this winter sports season. But then, you know, to your point, even going into, you know, fall sports and spring sports, I think we'll have more information in terms of what works, what's doable, and we can have those conversations with our neighbors as far as, you know, the playing districts. That's, that'd be, those'd be my thoughts.
Okay. Are we at a point where we can make a decision to allow them to go ahead? Because if not?
And are we, are we talking about all winter sports? I mean, what's the, I mean, are we just talking basketball, or we talk, I mean, what?
So the, so the winter sports are, you know, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, swimming, indoor track, and wrestling.
I have no idea how we could get by with picking one sport.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I mean, that's, it's a question.
Plus you got Title IX.
Well, let them come back.
There's always things with that, you got to realize.
Well, I mean, look, I've, I mean, I feel like I've, you know, done a decent amount of due diligence. I've spoken to a number of teachers who obviously are not supportive of this. I've also spoken with, you know, six coaches at Hidden Valley to get their opinions on it as well. You know, some have, you know, said I could share, some have said I couldn't, you know. I know the wrestling coach at Hidden Valley, you know, as far as the season, you know, he's like, no way. I mean, you know, you know, and it's not all COVID, it's that they have not, he doesn't think he can get his team ready in time, you know? So, but, you know. And then indoor track, I mean, where are we going to have an indoor track competition too?
You don't speak to that, because we're swimming in front.
Yeah, so there are a couple ideas. Yeah, so for swim, there was a really good idea. Most of our teams, teams already have facilities where they go and practice. So Patrick Henry in Hidden Valley, I think, came up with the idea of doing a virtual swim meet, where they run their meets with separate places, separate locations, time, everything, compare the times, and then they place the kids. So I thought that was an excellent idea. And then they still get to see the results and where they stand. For indoor track, they can always move to outdoor. That's one of the things that VHSL said, you can even play basketball outdoors if you had the right facility. So, you know, I think outdoor track, they could, they call them polar, polar bear of events, they could go outside and do most of those. So I don't think we have a trouble. Now, I will tell you with wrestling, I know wrestling is concerning for a lot of people, and VHSL clearly understands that too, because if you look at the mitigation strategies for wrestling, they're pages long. They've also reduced.
Don't they have to clean the mats every 10 minutes?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it's significant when it comes to managing wrestling. They've reduced the time that the kids are actually making contact with each other. So I I can tell you, there's a lot of mitigation strategies there, and they have changed drastically to help support that. Now, am I here to tell you that there's not going to be exposures? Absolutely not.
Sure.
But they they have put some mitigation strategies in.
I think, I mean, if I may help kind of frame further, I think as far as direction we would need would be, you know, we definitely would like to move ahead with starting practices, as Dr. Segal has, has described. I think we would want direction from the board in terms of the issue of spectators, just because there's different opinions about that. I think the mask wearing, we can hint, I mean, I, I think the recommendation would be to do as Dr. Segal has described in terms of the mask wearing. And then probably some just affirmation one way or the other about how you feel about, you know, just starting with varsity, or do you want to go further than that? I think those would be some key, you know, decisions that we would need to include in our recommendation.
Let me see if I can review the vetting. We have to make a decision today. If we don't do it, we're, we're behind, right? So we need, we need to do that. So it's either going to be yes or no. And and so it it certainly sounds like you've given this a lot of thought on how to mitigate this and minimize the, you know, the risk. So it's up to us to either, you know, say yes or no with, proceed with the plan, but let them come back to us and tell us, fill in, fill in the blanks on how to do this. I don't know any other way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
You know, to to Mr. Moretz's point, and and maybe Dr. Segal, you can weigh in here, but couldn't we allow that to be a choice for these coaches? If that, so for instance, the wrestling coach at Hidden Valley, maybe they don't have a wrestling team this year, if that's so chosen. But I think, you know, the, the kids, maybe they get another coach, you know, for that short period of time, whatever. But I think we can do this, and. And they're going to be challenges, but Dr. Segal and Dr. Nicely seem like they put in a lot of effort into the mitigations. You know, if we don't have, like you, Mr. Chairman, if we don't have fans, if we don't go to the state finals, some of that stuff, to me, again, I'm not, this isn't going to be popular either, is irrelevant. But it's the competition and the outlet for these kids to get back to some, some sense of normalcy. Even if it's, you know, got plenty of mitigation in between. So, I would hope we can move forward. And if some decide they don't want to have a team this year, you know, I think that's, that's their choice and we certainly understand it. I would make a recommendation that we move forward with practicing.
I think we're putting some coaches in a bad position if we allow it, leave it up to the coaches to decide whether or not they're, they're willing to coach personally.
I think, yeah, I think, and I, golly, I appreciate the, the thought, you know, to do that. But I think that, you know, it'd be awfully hard to, you know, to sort of leave it up to the coaches discretion because I think that's going to be hard to enforce and manage.
And I think if a coach decides not to coach, that's their decision. It's going to put a lot of pressure on them because a principal's going to have a really hard time replacing a coach within, you know, by the, to get this season rolling. It's going to be a, that's going to be a major task. I mean, maybe there's an assistant coach that'll step up. So, but I, I've heard from, from some coaches too, and I foresee we will have some coaches that will not move forward.
And what do you propose we do in those situations?
I think we're just going to have to scramble and try to find replacements. And then hopefully there's an assistant coach standing by, willing to step up. Because to get a brand-new coach up to speed, it's going to take a lot because our coaches have been trained throughout this whole COVID process. It's going to take a lot to get them up to speed.
Do you feel there's many that want?
I think there's going to be a few.
In various sports?
Yes. And some of it's, it's individual concerns, not so much the sports concerns, their own individual family concerns.
Got you. Got you. Well, I mean, I understand that. It's a, I mean, I will say that, you know, the six coaches I spoke to at, you know, Hidden Valley, you know, we had five that were, were ready and excited and, you know, you know, the wrestling, I, I think it's a good point. I mean, if you have not been practicing, it's going to be hard to get up to speed, you know, in, in two to three weeks, you know, for that. So, but, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, as long as we, you know, and that's another conversation. When, when I talk to the coaches, I mean, there is going to be extra work for our coaches when it comes to mitigation strategies. And that was, you know, the first thing that I asked them, you know, are you prepared, you know, to do this? And, you know, their answer was whatever it, you know, whatever I need, whatever I need to do to, to, to have some form of a season, I'll do it. You know, but I, I, I like the recommendations, you know, along. I said, you know, mask during, you know, the practice, you know, no spectators, you know, and it, and it may not be popular, but, you know, the idea of the, you know, hey, you want to play, do you want to play travel or do you want to play high school? You know, what's, what's more important? And giving the kids a choice. So-
Let me ask you this. What's, what's the, what is the, the basic motion that you need from us today?
In order to get started, I need to know whether we're going to move forward with practice in-season, five-on-five, ready, you know, ready to move, practice. And then we, what, what will happen from that point is I'll get with the A Ds and the principals and we'll hammer out all the other stuff.
All right. So-
Don't you think in fairness though to, and it says so if not, but I'm just wondering about in fairness to other schools and other districts, if the, if the, if the will of the board is to say, you know, we just want to limit this to Roanoke County schools, period?
Yeah.
I think that's something that would need to be decided.
And I think I also need to know JV and middle school.
Okay. And, and so it seems to me though, that would be your recommendation to do what you just described, that we start off with just Roanoke County schools. Do we have agreement or consensus there? That's a yes? That's a yes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Linden? All right. I was trying to prevent you from having to say no. All right. So, would somebody like to make a motion? Yes, go ahead.
If I can, you know, so that's, you know, practice, okay, you know, play within our district or play within county. Now, we need to decide, are we going to throw this down to, to JV as well?
No, we don't. What I'm trying to do is get a motion that gets us a bare minimum of them getting started. They're going to come back to us with, I, I don't have enough information to, to make a decision on whether or not to allow JV or, or not. But you need to come back to us with a recommendation on how we would do that.
Okay.
I'm trying to get the ball rolling with just saying, okay, let's give him, let's have a motion for number one, just playing in Roanoke County. And number two, it would be to allow practices to begin.
And then you would look and see how soon we could get the other JV or any other sports, I mean, the others.
Right.
I, I would just offer and say, absent, you know, the board's expression differently, you know, we would not go out tomorrow and say, okay, middle schools and JV, y'all can start practicing. We would not do that. So, I would just say that upfront. So-
Would you say that again?
Absent, you know, a decision, board decision to do differently, we would not be going out tomorrow and saying, okay, middle schools and JV, y'all can start practicing as well.
Right. We're just-
We would only allow varsity to start practicing.
All right.
But she would be looking at-
Maybe we should include that as a motion then. Just varsity.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think, I mean, it's a, it's a good step. I mean, you know, but all, all the end of last year and this year, you know, you hear about your, you know, your juniors and your seniors and, you know, you know, I don't mean this to, you know, certainly not to sound callous, but you know, the, the seventh graders, they're going to, you know, they're going to, they've got a few more years, you know, to, you know, I really think that the focus at this point should be on, you know, our varsity sports.
I'm really thinking too, though, when we, we say JV, our swim team, our indoor wrestling team and our wrest, and our wrestling team, indoor track team, they're not JV varsity. They're one big team. So, we're going to be cutting the team in half. So, that's a little bit troublesome. And most of our JV, a lot of our JV teams and, and varsity teams have been practicing, you know, in separate gyms, but they, they have the same routine. So, we would be disrupting their flow. But, I mean, that's okay. I just, I just think I need to throw that out there.
Well, to clarify, I mean, I, Dr. Segal has a lot of expertise in this area. You know, my, my, my desire would be to be protective of our high schools in terms of what they can pull off and do it well and do it right. So, you know, if you feel like that we could do that, I mean, I certainly would amend my, my comment. So, but that, that's my concern is whatever we do, we want to make sure we can do it in the safest way possible.
Question, how close are we to being able to get streaming these games?
The streaming? So, we're meeting, Jeff Terry's group is actually meeting with the company tomorrow and they're going to visit the schools. So, the idea is that within the next week, they should have the drops for those, for us to be able to mount the cameras and the, get the, everything set up. And then the company's going to come back in and wire everything. So, I've already been in contact with him, telling him that we have a two-week timeframe. We want this to happen. And so, the first phase of it's already moving right along. As long as that second phase, they can come in and hook us up. We should be good to go by the time our games start. No guarantee on that because there's a lot of moving parts. But we are right now hoping that will be in place in two weeks.
Anyone make a stab at a motion or?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Greenway made a motion, but do you want to amend that or the language that we want, that we had, that we added?
Would you, would you remind repeating your motion, Tim?
Yes. So, my, my thing would be that we at least have a motion to allow them to start practicing. Again, know that, knowing that there are moving parts and that we have to come back and, and fully mitigate where we're headed with this. But, so I would, I guess my motion would be that we stick with Roanoke County, that we notify the other, whoever needs to be notified, V H S L, the other district players, that this is going to be our decision for now. And that we start practicing immediately, at least in the varsity sports. And then, based off recommendations that come back from Dr. Segal, Dr. Nicely, you know, we may make amends and change some of that, but work towards a Roanoke County season.
Okay. So, Mr. Greenway, that, that is your motion that you're putting on the table right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Does that cover everything that-
I think we feel like that's enough to start with or build the framework that we need.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's boys and girls.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second? Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moretz?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Linden?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Gray?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Buss?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Moretz?
Yes, Chairman, if I could, you know, I, I know that, and, and thank you, you know, Dr. Nicely, Dr. Skoll, and everybody else I know that, you know, you've done a lot of work behind, behind the scenes and you've got, you've got some work on your, you know, got some work to do. You know, could you also, you know, maybe working on, one of my earlier questions was the funding aspect. I think that this is, you know, it would be quite unfair if we're pushing all this funding down to our high schools, you know, when the revenue just isn't there like it is in a normal year. So, what can we do to offset that?
Sure. There, there are some, there are definitely going to be some needs there. I know there's been lots of discussion about that. I think that those needs will be modified a bit probably with the shortened seasons and more in-county kinds of things.
Right, right.
We, we're going to be, we're going to need to come back with-
You don't have to drive to West Virginia to play.
No, no, no.
Right. You know, and can we rely, you know, can we rely on, you know, I mean, I know this is important to a lot of parents, you know. Can we rely on, you know, maybe parents, you know, help with transportation with their kids? I mean, so-
Maybe the county will give us some COVID funding.
There you go. Just one, as an aside, I wonder, we might even be able to explore some indoor track venues like Roanoke College. You know, reach, I mean, that's a beautiful indoor facility and they've allowed us to use it. Well, we have an alumnus here who might make that contact for us. Well, my daughter goes there too. We'll get her to say something. But maybe that's a possibility because I know they've allowed us to use it in the past when we were looking for a winter venue. So, anyway. Wow. Okay. I, I think we got through that rather well, in my view. Appreciate it. Let's see, the COVID-19 update is, or did you include that in?
No, this, this is short and sweet.
Short and sweet. Okay.
The, the data really hasn't changed much since the last time I presented the data. It's still, of course, we are in high transmission. You know, when I, we had our call today with the local health department. They said schools are fine to continue with their planning because they have, we have not shown any significant increase in transmission within our schools. So, that part's fine. It just encourages us to keep the five mitigation measures in place and that's what we are doing. So, that is helping us move forward. So, there's, there, as we've talked about multiple times, the impact over the next couple of weeks. But I think this athletic plan's going to give us some time to move phase and expand slowly. If we feel like that we're jeopardizing our athletes or our, you know, anything along this process, we can always pull back. So, I think it's good that, you know, we're giving us some time to take a look at that data. The CDC metrics for Roanoke, we were at 701 of new cases per 100,000. And two weeks ago, we were at 973, which is very odd. It's down a little bit, but we're still in the highest range. When you're looking at the percent of positive tests, we were at 11-2. And two weeks ago, we were at 11-1. Not much fluctuation there. So, we're still at the highest level, but, you know, it's still staying right up there. Good news is that we got the email from the health department to ask for our nurses, psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and speech therapists to, we sent the information to put on the list for their vaccinations and they said they should start receiving emails this week.
Any news on old school board members?
No, but they did say that the rest of the staff were waiting on that information. There's no timeline yet, but they're working on that. We've already started building our template to be ready to go once we get the green light. So-
We have it's old educators and those over 75 should be in the next big group.
There you go, Don.
I'm not there yet.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask our resident COVID expert a question as far as the vaccines? I figure everybody knows it's you. I mean, these vaccines, when they come in, are they coming in through the, our local health department and then the health department is sending them to the hospital, send them to the, I mean, are, are people getting vaccinated at the health department?
Right now, what they're doing is they're doing two sites. So, the health department's coming into the health department, they're designating two sites. They've done a drive-through site, they've done a stand-in-line site. And the people are designated to go. They go and there's a registration process. First of all, the company has to send your name. Then there's a registration process where each individual has to fill out this registration. Then you're on the list. And then there's like a six-cycle emails that go back and forth, that you get an appointment, you know, that kind of thing. Then there's some feedback for the follow-up vaccination. So, they're, right now, they're doing two sites. In the future, they're thinking, once they get more vaccine, it's going to go out to the pharmacies and the primary care physicians. But that's a ways down the road.
Would, you know, when, when I look at this list, the occupational therapists, the physical therapists, the speech therapists, you know, I, I know we employ a good number of, of, of those folks, but would our IAs that work with these kids fall into that list as well? I mean, they may not be a occupational therapist, but, you know, they're working with a faces program where they've got that close contact. Are, are they part of that group as well?
No. The only reason we were able to slide this group in is because when you looked at the medical professional list, which was very lengthy, they listed those, those positions at the hospital level. So, we, they were allowing our school nurses to go. And we asked, could we use, you know, add these positions to the list? And when they said yes, we jumped on it.
Okay.
So, we were really pushing a little bit there. And it, it wasn't that we don't think anybody else should have went first. It was just that that title of job was on the sheet.
And take advantage of it while you can.
And so, we asked and they said yes.
However, we have asked, you know, in terms of when they talk about teachers being where they fall, we have clarified that that does include teachers and staff. So, we won't just be limited to those with, you know, we can include bus drivers, IAs, and, and all of those folks in that group.
Is, have you heard about shortage of vaccine?
Not, they, she hasn't talked about that much. No. We, we don't have a really good picture of timeline yet either.
But there's companies continually rolling out, you know, vaccines. So, you'd hope that they'd catch up with maybe some of the supply problems.
Yeah. Haven't heard much about that.
Okay. We ready to move on, gentlemen? All right. Four dot oh three. Thank you, Dr. Skoll. A request for funding to supply and install internet drops. Mr. Chris Low?
Good evening. I won't take much time at all. I'm referring back to the live streaming Pixalot system. There is some funding that's required to, to make this happen on our end. We do have to run fiber to the Northside High School and the William Bird High School stadiums because they physically don't have the fiber at their stadiums. We also have to run, as was mentioned earlier, two data drops to every high school gym. So, we've contracted out with IAS to do that, to do that work. And we also had to provide electrical drops to each one of these units because obviously they need electricity to these units. So, we're requesting $22,000 from minor capital funds to cover these costs. And as Dr. Segal said, we're ready, we're meeting tomorrow and we look to hopefully get started within the next couple of days.
For the benefit of the folks who might be watching this live stream or play it back later, the reason why we're doing this is to allow spectators to live, to, to view our sports events. Is that-
Yes, sir. They'll be able to purchase a subscription, either an annual or a, I, I'm assuming there's a monthly subscription. And it actually is a fundraiser for the schools themselves as well.
All right. So, it allows spectators who might not otherwise, as a result of what we decide not to be able to see.
Correct, sir.
I think it's a great idea.
An out-of-town family, I mean, whatever.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, you're asking the board for-
$22,000 from minor capital reserves.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Four dot oh four. Update on school schedule plans. Mr. Mike Riley, Stephanie Hogan, and Dr. Nicely.
I'm going to kick us off while Ms. Hogan and Mr. Riley, the only Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to go through line by line where all we've been, you know, since the summer in terms of our, our school schedules and so forth. We did introduce our, you know, plan as an expandable- as an expandable plan, and we try to, you know, proceed with this throughout the year with an emphasis on, you know, getting as many of our younger students in as much as possible, you know, for all the reasons we've discussed before, thinking about even our older students, trying to maximize that, of course, within the constraints of our space and, and all of those issues, so, so we have, I don't know, Ms. Robertson, is that something we can pull up? Or check out, okay, I'm going to talk us through it and there are some, some slides to go along with this, and again, I'm not going to cover all of this, but we, one of the things that we said in October as we announced the next phase, we're going into the second quarter of, you know, bringing our third graders back in on a daily basis as well as students in the elementary level with daily IEP services and English language services, that, you know, the next phase was, you know, to continue to look at our capacity, continue to look at the many variables that are at play, to see, you know, what could be done and what could be done at the proper timing and, you know, as safely as possible, so we wanted to, of course, do all the work that was required to get that part up and running because in a lot of cases, the board is aware, we had to occupy cafeteria spaces and places like that that required, you know, purchasing room dividers and helping teachers move and, and do some things like that to get that going, so once that settled in at the first of November with the new schedule, you know, we started, you know, digging into some of these variables, for some of this we'd done ahead of time, but, and one of the things we were committed to was getting around and talking with our fourth and fifth grade teachers, once the new phase went into play with, you know, bringing back some of our special education students, some of our English language students, how that was going, how the third grade piece was going, to make sure that we knew all the variables at play in terms of anything else that we could do, so whoever's controlling the slides, we're going to advance to the one that has the RCPS expandable plan, if that's you, Mr. Leinberger.
This one really?
No, it's expandable plan, so you're going to advance about five, six slides in, just to kind of get us to where we are, I'll stop you when we're there.
Mr. Greenway can see.
Sure, okay, so this one, so this is, this was, you know, where we started, the previous slide just kind of gave some, the background information that I'm not going to take time to go back through, and then if you'll advance one more slide, Mr. Leinberger, this is something we've talked about before, this is a visual to help everybody understand what we're doing, yeah, some of the stuff that you'll be hearing, you'll hear this across the state is, you know, students need to be in school, we are here to say, students need to be in school, for all the reasons that, that we've discussed, the caveat with that, and you'll hear that continue with the state, we had our, you know, calls the health department this morning, they're encouraging, you know, maximize your in-person attendance, but you still need to follow the mitigation strategies, so the six-foot distancing is still, you know, the standard, of course, we're, you know, wearing masks, you know, continuously now, you know, we're doing the temperature checks, we're doing the contact tracing, all of those things still need to be in play, there are districts across the Commonwealth that, you know, have just for various reasons, just looking at the metrics, you know, are, have still continuously done only online instruction, so when you hear, and you'll be hearing more about this probably in the next few days, the emphasis on having more students in school, it's really looking at the districts that really haven't gotten to that point yet, what we're doing is exactly what the health department still affirms what needs to happen, and that is we need to maximize our in-person attendance, you know, under these mitigation strategies, so just as a reminder, I know the board's well aware, the six-foot distancing obviously is our biggest challenge in terms of what that does to space as well as, you know, the staffing needs, so under that, if you'll advance one slide, Mr. Leinberger, these are the questions that I've shared previously to the board that we were going to look at in terms of analyzing what some next steps might be, and I just want to say I really appreciate, first of all, Ms. Hogan, joining me on these conversations that we've had with our fourth and fifth grade teachers, we've really enjoyed getting to our 16 elementary schools and talking with the teachers, first of all, seeing their passion, you know, for, for students, lots of various opinions and so forth that we're going to share, but in addition to those conversations, and I'll just go and run through this, Ms. Hogan, real quickly, you know, we were looking at where are we in terms of our large spaces, you know, what's left in the schools, one of the things I've told our teachers is, you know, with 16 elementary schools, there's a lot of variation among our schools, you know, smaller districts that only have two or three elementary schools, you know, might have a lot more, you know, ability to do some different things, and we've got some schools, a couple, one down the hill here that has a lower enrollment, bigger spaces, more flexible spaces, if every single one of our elementary schools looked like that, we'd be able to do, you know, quite a bit more, but part of our analysis was looking at what large spaces are left, what available staff is, is left, knowing that in terms of large spaces, we need to start looking at, not only like we've done previously with cafeterias, but also the gymnasiums, which is a, you know, a tough thing to talk about and think about, but what's the trade-off there, knowing that any extra moves we make might involve, you know, students having to change teachers, that's a question that we looked at, you know, what availability is there in terms of our applicant pool in terms of hiring additional, either instructional assistants or teachers to help us continue to expand, Ms. Hogan's going to share that, one of the key questions that we've talked about with our fourth and fifth grade teachers is whether or not they should continue teaching their 100% online students or not, as you're aware, in grades four through 12, the teachers have not only their hybrid students, but also the students who are 100% online, in K3, what we've done in those grades is we have designated online teachers because those, you know, in-person students are attending five days a week, and so we didn't think it was fair to ask those teachers to also do the online, but we've talked to the teachers about that to get their opinions, we're going to share that, we looked at bus capacity, and then, of course, you know, health department recommendations in terms of timing of all of this, so I've set you up there, Ms. Hogan, to take it away with each of those questions.
Okay, and thank you for having me this evening, with that, and you can go ahead and progress to the next one, Mr. Leinberger, thank you, what we found out about the large spaces at each of the schools, we found that 11 of the 16 schools are already using their cafeteria for classrooms, six of the 16 schools are already using their library for a classroom, and currently zero of 16 schools are using their gyms for classrooms, 10 of 16 schools would have to use their gym space if fourth grade was added, so with that, you know, our conclusion is every school has space for fourth grade to attend four or five days if we use gyms at 10 of the schools, and only four of the 16 have space for fifth grade and not enough additional teachers or IAs can be hired to cover the split in online classes due to the need to cover the fourth grade and additional students in grades K through three, because as you're aware, we've invited our 100% online K through three parents, the opportunity for their children to possibly return 100% back into the building as well, okay, and we'll go ahead and go to the next one, remaining available staff at each school, what we found out is, is within the 16 schools, that none of them really have additional existing staff for splitting classes, and what that means is any changes will require the use of our existing staff and our hiring as many additional teachers as possible, what we did do during the month of December, we did interview and hire eight teachers, with that, we had some that were recent teacher graduates that were hired for Roanoke County, so we were able to secure eight more positions at that time, and those teachers are currently, right now, split between two elementary schools and are working until we determine exactly what our plan will be for our fourth grade. The trade-off, and that's the next slide, the trade-off for taking gyms from school for use of PE, there's a pro, is that, you know, we could use these gyms as classrooms that would allow all 16 schools to create a classroom space for fourth grade, because if we use those spaces, we could have more students that could be in those rooms with the six-feet social distancing, the cons would be, of course, is that we wouldn't have gym space and would have to move PE for all grade levels to the classroom or to outdoors, and also we would need to work with Parks and Rec, we currently have our ASK programs at many of our schools, and so we're in contact with them about adapting those programs if they were not able to be held in the gym, and then there were some comments from the parent advisory committee that were opposed to using gyms as classrooms, with that, the conclusion we draw from this is, is for a relatively short term, approximately four months, is that the benefit of having fourth graders attend school daily outweighs the repercussions of losing the gym for most students as long as after-school programs will be continued, and so that's what we've kind of looked at for the use of those gyms.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sir.
On the, on the PE, I don't know much about elementary schedules, but how long, how long is a PE class for an elementary kid?
If it's a regular school day, if we weren't in COVID, say like last year?
Right.
It would be 45 minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
What they have now is for K through three, it is 20 minutes, but they also have recess, they have recess every day, so we are meeting the requirements for the state for the physical education.
Let me throw out a crazy idea, which I'm known to do once in a while, is there any thought, or could there be any thought in, in busing our kids to the Greenbridge Center and allowing them to have, I've seen it, Roanoke City does it sometimes, there are schools who drop kids off, mostly, I think, special education kids, but it's, you know, maybe there's a way to combine and have a busload of kids if we have social distancing, but anyways, or could we possibly even think of that as, as an alternative, just a thought?
So the way, you know, just to clarify, students do have daily recess time, you know, with it directed by the classroom teachers?
Right.
Their PE time is directed by the PE teacher and they get that about once a week?
Mm-hmm.
It's in, well, not even that, it's a rotation, is it once a week?
Yeah, usually about once a week.
Okay, it's part of their specials rotations, you have art, music, part of the PE teacher.
So it's a once a week.
Yeah, so currently in the lower grade levels, it's about 20 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
And even in fourth and fifth, we're talking 40 minutes for the PE time in addition to the recess time.
Right.
So just thinking about that holistically.
Right.
Good, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question, how are you going to, the conclusion you said, as long as after-school programs, how are you going to continue those?
So we've, Dr. Segal's talking with Mr. Blunt at Parks and Rec to say, you know, they've already had to move from cafeterias in a lot of cases to gyms, it's a recreation-based program, so that's one of the big questions, but our preliminary conversations, I know with him has been, you know, they're very amenable to working with this and adapt, it may be less recreation-based, you know, for the rest of this year, but certainly that doesn't mean that next year it wouldn't go back to normal, but I think, so far, and they've, I mean, they've been open to working with us.
Okay.
But that was a concern, just making sure we.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide, the trade-off impact of students changing teachers, there could be some splitting of classes that will result in teacher changes for some students, and then this will happen if we follow the K3 model of having designated teachers for 100% online students, we have had teachers express concern about that because we know that, you know, as any teacher does, they become attached to the students that are in their classrooms and working with them, the conclusion we draw from that is, you know, we know that it's not ideal to change teachers, but it may be worth the trade-off in order to have more of our students attend in person, and so with that, we had to do a little bit of that when we brought our third graders back, and so that may be something that we have to do with fourth grade as well. The next one is about the availability of teacher and our IAs to hire, like I shared, since December, we have hired eight additional teachers, we took advantage of fall student teachers and December graduates, and we got a, really some fine individuals that have come along with us, currently, our pool of instructional assistants is very low, in order for us to have designated online teachers for fourth grade, we would have to have nine to 10 teachers and additional staff possibly to cover for more students who are returning back from being 100% online, and that's talking about those K through three students that are possibly considering returning, we may need to hire some, hire some additional staff for our schools, the conclusion we draw from that is, is that we can find enough teachers to add fourth grade, but not for fifth grade at all schools, where there is also a lack of space at many of these schools, we have to also consider the need for additional staff as some students are moving from being online with that. The next one is the, the information that we gathered from the fourth and fifth grade teachers, and I also want to echo Dr. Nicely, I thoroughly enjoy, that's one of my favorite parts of this position, is being able to get into schools and talk to teachers, and what I heard over and over is, as we came to visit with them, is that they truly appreciated us taking the time to at least get their input, with that, we found seven of 16 schools have an overall strong opinion in favor of having our fourth or fifth graders return, four of the 16 would like to have all fifth graders return, but some do have concerns, five of 16 have overall strong opinions against adding all fourth and fifth graders due to COVID concerns, 10 of 16 schools would prefer to not change rooms, will do so if needed, meaning that if they have to move to the gym or other spaces in the building, three of 16 schools have overall strong opinions against changing rooms, you know, some said it may possibly send them over the edge, and so with that, we would definitely work with them to help support them in that move and those types of things, nine of 16 schools prefer to maintain hybrid rather than give up their gym, eight of 16 schools prefer to keep their online students and have students attend four days, and that was very interesting because they are actually split, because eight, the other eight of the 16 schools prefer to have students attend five days and find designated online teachers, some teachers at 11 schools expressed concerns about the increasing number of students in schools, and all 16 schools express support for having our vulnerable students attend four days a week, so all of them are wanting to make sure that those youngsters that are not currently meeting success, meaning that they may have failing grades, for example, they would definitely like to see them be able to return back at least four days a week.
Do you have any questions on this slide, this was something we were trying to capture the flavor of our talks with the teachers, and again, we really appreciate, they were, and we tried to distinguish between people having overall strong opinions one way or the other versus just preferences, and they were very clear about that, you know, a lot of cases, most cases, we might prefer this, but we'll do what we need to do.
Yes.
So the majority, looks like the majority of our schools would prefer to keep things the way they are rather than give up their gym.
Prefer, right, but they'll do what we need to do, was what they said.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to one PE teacher who wants to give up their gym.
Oh, sure, PE teacher, right, yeah, these are fourth and fifth grade teachers we talked about, talked to, yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is about bus capacity to add more students, 124 of 137 elementary bus routes do have capacity for fourth grade, and 118 of 137 elementary bus routes have capacity for fourth and fifth, so the conclusion from that is, is that bus capacity will not be insurmountable obstacle for fourth grade if some geographically adjacent routes are adjusted, so we should be able to make that happen in order for those students to return. Okay, timing, giving COVID metrics, and health department recommendations, the health department advised that no new additions should be made until mid to late January, at earliest account for post-holiday spike, however, in-person attendance is encouraged as long as mitigation measures, including six-feet distancing, are followed, in which we've been doing that all along this year, and our conclusion is, is that the health department advice affirms expansion of in-person attendance as long as we continue with our mitigation measures and we follow those.
I just want to offer a quick commentary on that, because I know a lot of, you know, concern from a lot of our folks, you know, staff members, is the idea that if you just have more bodies in the school, that that's, in essence, is going to increase the risk, you know, the, the health department has been pretty supportive, we, you know, kind of shared our thoughts about it with them last week and again this week, and they really, again, affirmed that, look, if you're doing the six-foot distancing, you're doing the mask, you're doing these things you need to do, you know, we're okay with, you know, you're bringing in more students in person, so the key is to do the mitigation strategies.
And then, next, looking at our overall recommendations, is beginning January 25th, fourth graders will attend in person daily, will make a final decision, or a final decision will be made about four or five days a week to be determined by next Thursday, January the 14th.
That's that pivot point about, you know, do we have teachers do that, does it need it online, you know, for fourth grade like we've done for K3 or, or not, and we want a couple more days to kind of fill that out because you can see people are split on that, and we're going to have to just make a decision about it.
Yeah, fourth graders would not attend on January 21st and 22nd to allow for relocation of classes, it's exactly what we did with third grade, we had them have two days where they were virtual while the teachers had the opportunity to move their classrooms, beginning January 21st, all students in grades five through 12 with daily IEP services, English language services, and students failing classes will attend in person four days per week, and we've currently got principals who, as we've talked to them already this nine weeks, are aware of who those students are and will begin inviting them to attend, and then an open window through January 15 for 100% online students to switch to in person, is what we're looking. And then, an open window through January fifteenth for a hundred percent online students to switch to in person, is what we're looking at.
And just to reiterate, Miss Hogan's already covered this, but that right there in some cases, it puts us over capacity in some cases. And so that was going to require looking at, you know, having some additional staff to cover. So I will jump in for number three. This idea of bringing in, you know, students who are failing classes, we've, we've talked about, you know, first quarter grades. This does impact middle school and high school too, so Mr. Relaford, if there's anything you want to add to that plan?
Yeah, just in talking with, with principals, you know, each school, you guys know, being out in the buildings, have different levels of capacity, different sizes of classrooms. So we're still going to be contingent upon making sure we've got room for kids. And we're going to be very creative in getting kids back in as much as we can. But there may be some circumstances where we kind of have to prioritize who we can get back in particular classes just because they're already at or near capacity maintaining that six-foot distance. So that would be the only thing we'd have to look at there, is just make sure that we're keeping track of those types of things as we're inviting those students back in.
Yes, question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, from an attendance standpoint, if we have, if we bring back X number of students who are failing, you know, right now, four days a week. I mean, from an attendance standpoint, they're going to be required to come to school four days a week, is that, is that correct?
We'd be changing their schedule from the, this, this is for the hybrids students.
Exactly.
A hundred percent online, they have that option.
Once they switch to that, if, if, you know, the days they miss, that's an absence, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, so are you going to kind of be selective in the students? I mean, I know we're talking capacity, but, you know, I mean, it all comes down to capacity. I mean, if you've got thirty spots open at Hidden Valley High School, you know, I mean, are teachers going to get together to try to choose which students are the most vulnerable?
We've already been working with principals, we've, we've instructed them before the holidays to construct a list. If you guys remember, when I brought all the grades to you guys at that point in time, I said we were already working with principals for the next phase. And we talked about the tiered structure and what we were looking to do. This is just the next phase of those kids. We had the Wednesdays that we brought kids back and talking with the buildings, the secondary level, that's been very successful for the kids who have been able to come in on Wednesdays. This is just the next step in getting kids back in the building who aren't being successful and giving them an opportunity to work with their teachers, to be in the building, to have the structure that some of them need. So principals, principals are ready to do this when, when we're ready to start bringing them back in. They've got those lists already created.
You through, Mr. Ruth?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Oh, what about the physical equipment that's going to be needed? Are we?
We, we actually kind of cover some of that in our next slide, so, which we can go ahead and do, or we can come back to that?
No, that's fine.
Have we seen an increase since we brought in third graders, and it may still be too early to tell? Have we seen an increase, or an improvement in their grades for those students who were not part of our original plan but have been expanded back in? Is it able, are we able to tell?
To give you something definitive, I don't, but what I have heard from principals, because I spent the month of, during December, having meetings with them about the current progress of the students in their building, it is my understanding that teachers are reporting since having kids back full-time that it definitely, that they're seeing kids move in the definite right direction. And that it's going very well. And then I've also gotten feedback from our fourth and fifth grade teachers who had their special ed and their ELL students return, that their performance has been much better as well. And we just know that, that when we have our children with us and they're able to be there in person, that they, they're able to succeed, and we know that. For additional actions and needs that we have, we will need to purchase additional room dividers for each of the schools that will be needing to use their gym. We do have to purchase some individual student desks for some of the elementary schools where they're needed. And we're currently on working with Chris Low on getting some pricing for that. We'll have to adjust bus routes where needed, determine impact on the after-school program with Parks and Rec. And I know that's what Dr. Seagull is currently in communication with them about. And then we'll continue monitoring the evolving situation with staff vaccinations. Of course, an ideal outcome would be that all staff would have the opportunity to be vaccinated in February and March. Community cases would decline, and the Health Department would agree to relax physical distancing for the fourth quarter. And we urge the community to help us, help our kids to be in school by wearing masks and taking those other precautions.
I'll just chime in and say that last little part of our commentary, in terms of just hopeful speculation. But I mean, you know, that's, that's part of why all these efforts and the continued focus on mitigation strategies is so important. We need to stay on a positive trajectory, trajectory. So, you know, again, all the things that we're doing that we know that works as far as, you know, the distancing in the classrooms and the mask-wearing, we need to obviously not relax on any of those things. So, you know, the vaccinations is, is a hopeful thing. But I do want to assure our staff members that, you know, this, these recommendations as far as looking at, you know, having fourth grade attend more regularly and so forth, is not continued upon vaccinations. This is based on what we know now in terms of what our capacity is and what frankly, our Health Department has, has endorsed. I mean, they have expressed support of, you know, bringing in additional students as long as we continue the measures. Did I, did I answer your question earlier, Mr. Ray, in terms of other things that we need?
Yeah, I guess we just need a cost added to it at some point.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, so none of the, these are, these are presented as information in terms of things that we have to obviously work on and put in place in order to do this. None of these are presented in terms of any obstacles or things that would preclude us from doing it, it's just more of awareness. You know, if, as we need to come back for any sort of, you know, funding or anything like that, then we'll do so. But, but none of this are things that would get in the way of our implementing the next phase.
And that, that's all that I had.
Any questions? Mr. Greenway, you still there?
I'm here, and it is exciting.
Yes, it is.
So, thank you all.
Yep, we do have an expandable plan, that's for sure.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, Mr. Mike Riley.
Can you pull that PowerPoint up, Chuck, the middle school?
Yeah, we're tired of looking at it.
Well, Mr. Riley's doing that. This topic is one that we're just presenting tonight as, as information in, in terms of the spirit of our work session. This is the first time that you're probably hearing about this, but this is something that we actually lived with for about eight years in, in terms of our middle school schedule. And some things have evolved to make us start looking at this and look at some changes that we're going to start to introduce over the next couple of years, as well as some other tweaks that we might consider as well.
Right, and we'll start, just Dr. Nicely kind of laid the groundwork there, just kind of where we came from. Back in the two thousand ten-eleven school year, Rona County Public Schools made the decision to move its secondary schools to the block schedule. I don't know if you guys remember, back then, we were on the seven-period day, forty-seven-minute periods. At that point in time, because of budgetary constraints, teachers were actually teaching six of seven classes at that point in time. So in looking at it, in talking with the board, in making some very difficult decisions at that point in time, the board chose and voted to move to the block schedule. They looked at several different types of block scheduling and decided at the high school level, the best way to go was the A-B schedule. There's a lot of research behind that and reasons they did that. But as middle school practitioners, and at that time, Dr. Nicely was actually a middle school principal, I was his assistant principal, I was the scheduler, so we were both very involved in putting this together. We tried to do some different things with the middle school to try and make it a little more appropriate for kids that were a little younger. What we decided to do, and you guys know this, because this is our current schedule, for math and English, we did that every day all year for the ninety-five-minute block, so that kids had a full ninety-five minutes every day of math and English. And I think that's been a tremendous success. If you look at our SOL rates, SOL pass rates, and just how well our students have done, I think it's a combination of fantastic teachers in the classroom, but there is no substitute for time with teachers. We're seeing that right now. Time with teachers is, there's no substitute for. We talked about science and social studies. The question was, do we do it matching the high school, where it's on an A-B schedule? One day they would have science, one day they would have social studies, it would match what we do at the high school. Or would we do the semesterized block, which we had decided not to do at the high school for different reasons? What we decided to do there, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit, actually, I'll skip ahead and just, and then, of course, our electives are on an A-B schedule right now. Where they have, if they have band, they have that one day, and then they have PE the next. Or in the eighth grade, because of this schedule, we did eliminate eighth grade PE as a requirement. Up to this point, it had always been required to take PE in the eighth grade. We eliminated that, there were some things in the SOQ that allowed us to do that, so we made those changes. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Chuck. It was thought that, of course, they would benefit from the additional math and English instruction. And the thought behind the science and social studies would, it would benefit our middle schoolers to only have to worry about one core class at a time. So for one semester, you would have a science class, and one semester, you would have a social studies class. And there is some validity to that. In fact, if, I'll share this in just a second, you've got it in Board Docs. We compiled a list of kind of pros in both. So there was, there was some reasoning behind it. But as we've experienced it for almost a decade now, we've seen that there are some, some issues, quite honestly, with the semesterized schedule. And like Dr. Nicely said, this is something that hasn't just, just come up now. It's something we've been talking about as a group of practitioners. Of course, before I got into this position, I was a middle school principal. So something that we had talked about for a while is, would there be benefits to moving to the A-B schedule? For some of the same reasons that back when they made the decision to put the high school on the A-B schedule as opposed to the semesterized block, some of the same reasons hold true even for middle school students. So that's what we've been talking about and looking at, we've, we've been talking to the middle school principals. We actually sent a survey out to the middle school teachers, the science and social studies teachers, to get their feedback, to see what their thoughts were. So Chuck, if you can go to that next slide. So we took feedback from the students and teachers and created a list of benefits of each schedule. And then we talked to teachers and students about which schedule they preferred. Go ahead and go to the next slide before I go over the list. It was interesting, the information, the, the feedback we got from teachers when we asked, I wasn't sure what we were going to see, because I've heard both sides. Literally, when we closed the survey before break, we had sixteen teachers who said, yeah, we want to move, we want to change. And honestly, for teachers, that's a big deal, to, to say, this is what we're doing now, we want to change. You had half of them say, yes, we want to do that. You had the other half who said, no, we'd like to stay with what we're doing. So there really wasn't a consensus one way or the other there. We talked to the SAC students, and the reason I chose them is you had a, a lot of high school kids who had a chance to go through the middle school and experience that schedule, and then go to the high school and experience the A-B schedule across the board, and give us some feedback on what they thought. Again, it was pretty close, really probably not statistically significant difference in terms of being split down the middle. And when we asked for the reasons, the reasons were very similar for the semesterized block. The teachers that want to keep the semesterized block, for the most part, they say, well, they feel like it's best for kids to only have that one subject at a time, it's easier for them to focus on that. But the reasons for the A-B, as we start to look at it as an instructional department, as we talk to the administrators, and as you talk to a lot of the teachers who are in favor of moving, I think, as an instructional department, we feel or want to recommend that in the future, we look to move to the A-B schedule. Again, for many of the reasons that we chose A-B for the high school to begin with. I don't know if you have the ability to pull this up in Board Docs, there's actually a Word document that has these listed there. We sent this out to the teachers when they completed their survey. Really, I'm just going to focus on a few of these, you don't necessarily have to have it in front of you. We've already talked about the, the benefits of the semesterized class. Is students have one fewer class to focus on at a time, and they don't necessarily have to worry about tracking A or B classes each day. There are some other benefits there, yeah, and Chuck, you may have that in there too to pull up, it's attached to Board Docs, that's it right there, yes, sir. All right, we'll let him. So if you look semesterized, there's, there's a few other things that I'm sure you guys, you know, teachers, teachers will, will bring up. You know, they have fewer students at a time, if you have a semesterized class, you only have, you know, seventy kids, but you have them every day. I know some teachers in the survey had indicated, well, they, they had less grading if they did it that way. Well, if you think about it, over the course of the year, you have the same amount of grading. It's just, now I'm grading seventy kids' work every night, because they're, they're with me every day. Whereas if I'm, if I'm in the A-B, like the high school teachers, I have, I might have seventy-one night and then seventy the next night of that different group of kids. So again, really, the time and the students end, ends up balancing itself out over the course of the year. I'm not going to go through all of these for time's sake, and again, like Dr. Nicely said, this is just information. We're actually going to, we'll talk in a little bit about our recommended, when we'd like to kind of implement this. But just a few of the big key things. First of all, if you think about what happens over the course of a year that impacts science and social studies. For instance, if you're a student in a civics class right now at one of our middle schools, you've had an incredibly rich environment to talk about the Electoral College and the election process and due process and the rule of law. All those things are huge things in civics that those kids are having an opportunity to get some real-world examples in. If you're a kid who got scheduled for civics second semester, you're missing all that. You're not going to have any of that. Now, you can go back and bring that up, but for kids to be able to dig into something that's happening in the world right now, that's huge. And we don't have that ability when it's semesterized. Some other things that happen is, if you are a science student and you end up with science second semester, and you're an advanced science student, makes it very difficult to participate in science fair, because you didn't have that first semester to work with a teacher, to get ready for science fair. So both of those things become very difficult and make it hard for our middle school students to participate and have a full year's worth of things. That's, that's one reason. A second thing, and this gets kind of into brain science and really talking about how the middle school brain works, is the whole idea of processing time. The, the teachers call it, or what they, what they listed here is kind of sink-in time. And that's that ability to take it home, to think about it, to work with it, to, to come back and deal with it a few days later. When you talk to teachers, even the ones who, who want the semesterized schedule, they would admit that it's very fast-paced. You don't have a lot of time, you've got to move on, you're covering a unit almost every week to get to the end of the semester to finish the course. For a middle school student to truly be able to think deeply about those things is very difficult. And really, the difference is, if you, if you know, you know, for the past several years, we've talked about deeper learning, and that being the bedrock of what we want to do, it's difficult to really get into deeper learning in science and social studies when you've got to cover an entire year's worth of material with a middle schooler in a semester. It, it just, it moves very quickly, it just does. Now, you can get through it, and they only have to focus on that one thing. But in many cases, I fear we're just putting a lot of information into children's short-term memory, and a year later, it's gone. We're not building those connections that we need to. So I think in an A-B schedule, you have that ability. It, it's one of the things they talk about in neuroscience is spaced recall. Where I recall it, I have to work with it, I take a little break, and then I come back and I work with it again. The more you're able to do that, the more it goes into long-term memory. And unfortunately, in a semesterized class, teachers just don't have the time to do that. So that's another big reason. Another thing is, we would like to see teachers be able to do more cross-curricular collaboration. It would be fantastic for our English teachers to be able to work with our science students who have research papers to do in science. And that's a great natural cross-curricular opportunity. But if only half your students are in science at one time and the other half are in social studies, you really can't do that. Same thing with a math class. Maybe a math class wants to do a project with a science teacher or with a social studies teacher. Makes it very difficult to do those things when only half the kids in my math class are in either science or social studies. So I think for that and a lot of other reasons, just in terms, and you can look through that list there, the, the instructional department would like to move that direction. Chuck, if you want to go to that last slide. Initially, we had thought about wanting, because again, this is not something that just came up. It's something we've been talking about for years now. Initially, we had thought about trying to do this moving into next year. But the more we thought about it, talking with Dr. Nicely, some of the principals and some of the teachers, we feel like it's probably best, instead of, actually, that's the, that's the, not the new one, but the new one, instead of starting this fall, which is initially what we had thought, what we're proposing to do is start the fall of two thousand twenty-two, to give ourselves a full year next year to really prepare the teachers, especially the ones who maybe just aren't comfortable with moving to the A-B. They're, they're nervous about change, given everything that's going on right now. We agree now may not be the time to move, but we want to make you guys, first of all, aware that this is a direction that we're thinking about going, there are some other. There are some other things that we're looking at in the middle school schedule that we may come back to the board with to look to change. Again, stemming from that initial conversation back in 2010, 11. But we wanted to bring this to you guys and see if you did have any questions at this time, understanding that we're, we're looking to move this direction. You know, well, it, it'll be here before you know it, so.
Is, is the main reason to wait just to get the teachers on board with it?
I think, I think that's, that's some of it.
Well, yeah, I, there, there are some other pieces of the middle school schedule. And, and these are, believe me, these are, there's been eight long, it, it's only been in the last year or so that they finally convinced me that this is the right thing. But, but I'm there. You know, I think just thinking about next year and thinking about, you know, getting back to normal and all that. You know, maybe it's wiser to give everybody more time to plan for this change because this will be something that they've not done for a long, long time, or in some cases not. And other pieces, like I said, I think there's some other pieces of the middle school schedule that I would like for Mr. Riley and the middle school principals to, to look at further. Maybe do this all at once. And so that's, that's part of, you know, just wanting you to know what we're thinking. But, you know, something that we're kind of looking to do the following year.
If somebody like you would have talked to you 10 years ago, we wouldn't be in this mess.
Right. Well, I was, I was part of the group they talked to. I just didn't know what I know now.
I know, as, as many of us do. You, you didn't know what you didn't know, right? But at least you're willing to change. Good deal.
Do you foresee making any other recommendation changes in the future when it comes to middle school?
I think so.
Mirror more like what our schedule is at the high school?
Probably not exactly like at the high school.
So, so talk to me, you know.
Well, that's, that's what this does.
Yeah.
Partly, right? I mean, these kids are still in math and English five days a week, right?
Right.
Yes.
Not that way at the high school.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, so, you know, it's been, I'm two, two years removed now from a middle schooler. So remind me again how long that English class is every day.
95 minutes.
All right, so.
And just, just a little bit of history.
That's a.
Prior, prior to, uh, prior to 2012, that, that's, because the language arts skills, you know, is the reading, the writing, as well as all the grammar and all those kinds of pieces. That's, that's the elementary model that kind of has always extended up at least through seventh grade. Even when we were on a seven-period day, all sixth and seventh graders had two periods of English. And so that didn't change. It changed for eighth graders at some schools. And again, this is some history. You know, some schools, almost all eighth graders had double blocks of English. At some schools, not so much. The math was the kicker. And, and obviously, this was a lot of SOL test-driven. As a middle school principal, I can tell you, going across the state and saying, you know, here's what it takes to have students in middle school do well on, on SOL test. And by the way, we're still trying to do that in 45 minutes. People just laugh and say, you can't. So that, that, those are a lot of the things that drove those decisions. But those, but, but those are some things that, that we're looking at, especially in eighth grade to, to reexamine.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Last but not least, our first discussion, believe it or not, of the 2021-2022 budget. Susan Peterson.
Hey, while we're waiting on Susan, you know, with, with the amount that Renner County is raising the assessments on a lot of these properties, we should see.
Do we need to do anything with the panel before it goes to standby?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Just punch it.
Believe her to this point, neither can I.
Right.
But we are. So this is our first work session. And if you want to go to the next slide, Chuck. Today, we're gonna just real quickly touch base on the budget process itself. We're gonna review student enrollment, take a look at the governor's budget. We'll look at four funds that feed into, feed from replacement schedules. And we will look at the anticipated budget obligations that we are aware of right now that are kind of big-ticket dollar items. So if you want to skip on. And again. So as part of the budget process overview, you know, when we take a look at the budget, we have to look at revenues and expenditures. The biggest part of our revenues does come from the state. Last year, 52.5% of our budget came from the state. And today, we'll go over the governor's budget. And in the months to come, we'll look at the Senate and the House when they have their crossover. And then we'll look at the General Assembly at the end. So then the, under other revenue, you know, we get 45.3% of our funds from the county. And then the rest of it comes from various other sources. So we have to balance the incoming money that we're gonna get, the incoming funds, with our expenditures. And our big-ticket item is the payroll, as you're all aware. In the current year, our payroll is 84% of the total general fund budget. And that would include any step increase that we would give, the VRS benefits, the insurances, you know, the leave pay options and staffing would be all part of the compensation. And then we have to look at other non-payroll expenditures. And on that list specifically, replacement schedules are what we're gonna focus on today. If you want to advance. Chuck? Thanks, sorry. Just to remind you of the different kind of buckets or pots of money from which we can spend. The biggest pot, as you can see up there, is the general fund. We also have money coming in and out of the grant fund that is very specific for the purpose for which we were given the money. The nutrition fund has its own pot of money. And then the student activity fund is a standalone fund. Down in kind of a gold area down below, we've got four funds that share resource, get resources from the general fund and other areas. These include the instructional resources fund, the fleet replacement fund, the technology replacement fund, and the capital projects fund. All of these are basically feed and support a long-term adoption plan or replacement schedule. And they receive a large chunk of money from the general fund. So we like to look at those first so then we know what our needs are in the general fund. The textbook adoption plan will support the instructional resources fund. And then in the green box, all of those other plans, replacement schedules, make up our combined capital improvement program. They include the fleet replacement plan, the technology replacement plan, and the CIP. Underneath the CIP, the CMP is part of that. So watch the picture that place. So if you want to go forward. So to take a quick look at our student enrollment, we have a graph that shows since 1995, how we happily, our budgeted enrollment was 13,483. And due to the pandemic that we are facing, the VDOE estimate of our ADM right now is 13,198. Our December enroll, uh, enrollment data was 13,179. So we're trending right there with what the VDOE is saying. So we've taken a large chunk of a reduction in our enrollment. We are trending not as high as the state. The state has a 3.5% reduction in enrollment and ours is not quite that high. Ours is trending at 2.9%.
Excuse me, do, do we have projections for the next five years? I mean, I know that there would just simply be projections, but do we have, do you have figures as, as to what our projected enrollment is for the next four, five years?
You know, if you would have asked me that about two years ago, I could have said, yeah, sure, I can give you that. But right now, facing this COVID, I have no clue. I don't think the state knows. I don't think anyone knows at this point. Once we get past this year and we see what fall brings us, then I think we can get more comfortable with, are we gonna come back to where our levels were? Are we gonna stay lower? I'm sorry, Dr. Nicely?
I guess the question would be, are the traditional forecasts that we've had in the past, are they still available or not? If they are, then I think there's some question about are they accurate? That's to your point. Are, are they available? Do you know, like the Weldon Cooper in VDOE or whatever we, measures we typically?
Well, why don't you go ahead and go to the next slide, Chuck? So in this slide, this, this shows how we typically look at our, our ADM. And the purple is our grade progression. And let's first look at 2020. This is what this one is. So the purple was our grade progression. And we were at 13,610 for 2020. And the yellow is the VDOE estimate. We budgeted based on grade progression. And we came in a slight bit lower. So come to the current year, and that's where you see this big dip. Grade progression was 13,483, and that's where we budgeted. And VDOE was at 13,453. So with COVID, we know we've dropped quite a bit. We have done a grade progression based off of where our enrollment is right now. And that gets us at 13,186 is what grade progression would estimate our enrollment would be next year. The VDOE estimates it at 13,087 for next year. Given that we don't know what's gonna happen, my recommendation is that we just go with VDOE's estimate.
I know there are people moving in and out of the county all the time, but do we track births? I mean, do we know how many, how many one to four-year-olds that will start to get in our system? Do we?
That's part of the grade progression, yes.
That's part of this progression?
Like projecting kindergarten enrollments? Is that based on actual lab births and so forth?
That, that information's pretty, that's available from, what's the, the, the Virginia UVA, I believe, has.
That's, is that Weldon Cooper?
What is his name?
Weldon Cooper.
Weldon Cooper. You can get, you can get that from Weldon Cooper right now and look at Roanoke County. And they'll give you, they, they do all those calculations. So I mean, it's, it's, it's the best projection of what's happening in the county with birth rates and death rates, all of that stuff. So I mean, that's a good place to look.
I would think that would be good to include, I mean, just for our future budgeting or planning, if, if we can include.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it used to be that the VDOE projections tended to be underestimated, estimations, what we were doing, like we, we would, they were projecting lower. But then more recently, they've actually been pretty accurate.
Actually, I think they were way high.
Okay.
And so that's what we did our own because we didn't want to have that excess money that we weren't gonna actually get.
I have a, I have a simpler projection. I look at how many businesses were bringing into the county and kind of determine it from that standpoint. Check that out now, miss. See what we come back with. Thank you, I'm sorry.
We almost forgot you were here, Tim.
I won't let that happen.
And if you want, Mr. Linden, I have already incorporated the live birth data as part of the grade progression. So that, that's what this number is based off of.
Okay.
Was the final decision on holding harmless, was it? For, you know, we got that. Are you, are you covering that, I guess?
So if you want to, y'all are just moving me along, aren't you?
That's good.
Are you saying I goatee smile?
Donna has some interviews to do.
So if we go on into the governor's budget, um, this, okay, you've got two in front of you. One has the caboose and one has a happy new year. The one with the caboose represents the current year. When the governor issued his budget, he issues a caboose budget which firms up what is going on in the current year numbers. And part of that same calculator tool is next year's budget that we'll see in the next slide. So in here, in that incentive number, the 1.59, there is 1.3 million related to the no-loss funding. So we, that has been included as part of the governor's budget. He also included $470,814 as part of COVID-19 local relief payments to us. The other number that you'll see under lottery where that came up, there's almost an equal reduction under incentive. That's for risk funding. And it's because they're getting, they're estimating they're gonna have more money in lottery. And we have one line on them called at-risk funding. And they shift, they split that between these two buckets. And they shift it as they see the need. So that's kind of where we stand with the no-loss funding. And that's for the current year. So if there are no questions, we'll go on to next year. So on this schedule, what you'll see, um, there's a big reduction under the SOQ without the sales tax. And the big driver for this is the fact that the state came back and, and realizes sales tax is gonna be higher than what they estimated during their veto session. And so they're putting more money into it. The downside of that is they have an inverse relationship with our basic aid and the state sales tax. When the state's sales tax number goes up, our basic aid goes down. So it's just, it shifts like this, kind of like that at-risk funding. And so basically, what's happened is the basic aid has gone down because our sales tax has gone up. One other item that was included that did give us a little bit more under the basic aid is the school counselors. Last year, the governor had certain criteria that he wanted to meet. And his budget this year, he wants all school levels to have 325 students to one teacher. So that's part of the budget as well. Although the, the additional funding is kind of lost in the negative with the sales tax. Moving on, and the incentive, we have, get the number, 1.1 million for the no-loss funding, again. So the same as what we discussed for the current year. The other portion of that amount is related to a bonus that the, the governor has put forth. And this bonus is very specific. It has to be a bonus that is 2% higher than what the employee earns for the current year. And so he will let it be a one-time bonus or raise, but it has to be 2% more than what they're making now. And they do not allow you to go back to the current year and include that to obtain this funding. And the amount of money revenue related to that is $943,000. So this has happened to us once before where we found ourselves one year able to, I, I think it was a year where we gave like a $7 million, put that amount of money towards salaries. And then the next year, they gave a very large, um, kind of bonus like this. And we never did qualify and we lost that in that revenue because we couldn't afford to do any more to meet what they wanted us to do. So between now and when the General Assembly stops, my recommendation is to ask that language be changed to go back and allow, if they're gonna leave it, the bonus, or they're gonna change it, but allow it to cover both years of the biennial. Because then that will help us pay for the raise that the school board approved just last month. So that would really help if they change that rule. If not, that is money that we may possibly see that we leave on the table if we can't afford to go in there and pay for it. We ran the numbers and the bonus that they, amount that they're, they have in our calc tool is $943,868. For us to give a 2% raise over what everyone's making right now would be 1.9 million. So again, it's 49% funding levels of what we need.
But they proved the year on a biennial basis, so it looks like they, they reset. But they proved the year on a biennial basis, so it looks like they'd be receptive, or it looks like it'd be receptive to, for us to go back for the two years, right? I mean, doesn't it make sense?
If they change the-
Makes sense, but that doesn't make sense to them.
You just, you just answered your question.
So, and that is, but, but that, that is- That bonus money that's part of that incentive, as always, it only applies to the SOQ position, I mean, positions, correct? I mean, so, which makes up, what, what did we figure, about sixty? Was it somewhere in the sixty percent range of our total employees?
It's not as much as you would think, but yeah, you're correct.
And it is the cumulative effect of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, yes.
Hugely important, right?
Yeah. So what we had done was we just, um, I had staff run it two percent based off what everybody makes right now. And based off of that, it was, um, one point nine million. Um, so then the next outstanding item to bring your attention to is down under the grant fund, that one ninety-five, two seventy-three. The majority of that, if y'all recall, last year, the governor, one of his, um, big pushes is to increase the early education, um, opportunities for students. And with our VPI program, they gave us a lot of extra slots. And in the original budget, they raised the per pupil, um, funding levels up. But when COVID hit, they slashed that per pupil rate. So the amount that's sitting in here, the one ninety-five, they actually increased the rates twenty-one percent over last year. So that, that's a good thing for our VPI program. So at the end of the day, we're looking at two point three million if we can afford the bonus in the general fund and, uh, the various other increases and increases in the other funds.
Okay.
All right.
Cool.
So if you wanna move on, Chuck? So now we're getting into the instructional funds, and let me just kind of, for the next four slides, and you'll see them in your book. The way that I leave your books out is so that the top page, if you lay it flat, is your replacement plan. And the bottom page is your financial statement budget. And so on the first page, you'll see the top half is your replacement needs, your adoption schedule, it's the costs. And we have scheduled them out on different numbers of years. This one is going to twenty twenty-eight. Your fleet is over fifteen years. You'll have different years, but we, this is a long-term projection. And then for this one specifically, we've got your subject areas. Oh.
Hold on.
Kill me, Chuck, you're killing me.
I'm sure you have it memorized.
Let's go to that first. We will have to do this when we start here, so if you need, uh-
All right.
We can follow along.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah, we can follow along.
If you guys know, we say instructional resources, think tech fund.
All right. And so, um, for all of them, the, the total in that block is gonna agree to the costs in the expenditure on the next page. So if you flip to the next page, you'll see in twenty twenty-two, your replacement needs on this page are one point four seven oh. And if you go to the next page, the total cost, the total expenditures in the twenty twenty-two budget is one point four seven oh. So, um, this is actually, and the instructional resources fund is actually a new plan that, uh, Mr. Riley and Ms. Hogan and Mr. Weeks and their team, all of their supervisors, sat down and looked at the VDOE adoption schedule and scheduled out when they needed what. And I'll let you take it from there if you-
Well, and we've talked about this a little bit when we did the English adoption. For years, we've been, we, we've, we've just grossly underfunded our instructional resource fund. Um, if you look at the costs, I don't, in fact, I think if I went back ten years, I think we've actually reduced the amount that we've been putting in that fund over a ten-year period of time. And of course, inflation in terms of what the cost of materials are continues to go up. So what would happen is, we would adopt the materials. For instance, we're, we're a little behind on the science adoption as, as it is right now. You might adopt all the science materials at one time. We would bring that to the teachers. The teachers would pick the materials they, they wanted. We would work with the different vendors. We would bring that to, to you guys. You guys would say, yes, we approved the adoption. Well, just because we adopted it doesn't mean we had the funds to buy it. And then what we would do is we'd just piecemeal. What, what can we do without? What do we have to have? We'd buy a little here, a little there. What would happen then is, you, you would enter, often the VDOE would enter into agreements with publishers to make sure that things would remain current and workable for a seven-year period of time. That's how often adoptions happen. They redo SOLs and SOL tests, all those types of things every seven years. So every seven years is kind of that schedule. Well, what happens is if it takes you three years past that date to purchase materials, four years later, some of that stuff's out of date. And in many cases, because we've moved to digital content, it's not supported anymore. Uh, it, it doesn't work. So, so you're, you're stuck. Um, in some cases, we purchased consumable materials that were out of print. We had that this year where we had, we, we needed science textbooks for the middle school, because every year they get a consumable book, a book that they get to take home and write in and work in. Well, because we were past that seven-year date, they weren't printing them anymore. They weren't out there. So we had to find a wholesaler, and we were kind of at their mercy of what they wanted to charge us. And initially, they wanted to charge us three times the price that we would have paid before. Because they were the only ones that had them. They had bought them out from the company. Now luckily, Brian Weeks did a great job of working with them. Because of the volume we needed, he got the cost down. But it, it creates issues when we have to spread it out so long. Now, now honestly, we, I, I don't know that, and Susan and I have talked about this. I, I don't think we have the money to fully fund some of the stuff we need to do right now, because we are a little bit behind. But I think, looking at this schedule, we've created a path every seven years of replacing everything we need. We've worked with all the teachers, with CTE, with music and performing arts, with health and PE, just in terms of when they would need to replace their resources. Um, and I feel like we've got a good schedule. We did a great job. I want to thank you guys for the work you put into getting us fully adopted with our English materials. Um, and I think if you've talked to any of our English teachers, they're thrilled with the stuff they've been able to get. Um, and, and use, especially now with kids at home, we've got the ability to do that. Um, science is up next. And what it looks like right now is we're probably gonna have to spread science out over two years. Just because at the same time, because of what we've done with world languages, we've got a major need in our world language courses. And some stuff that we have to get.
I'd like to make a point, if I will, and, and I'm gonna use something you just described to talk about our budgeting process. Just, and just think about this for a little bit. So for ten years, basically, we've been underfunded in technology, right?
Well, level or, in some years, if the budget's tight-
Basically, you don't have, you don't have what you need-
Correct.
-to get to where we need to go.
Correct.
But in those past ten years, we've run seventy million dollars in surpluses. What is wrong with our budgeting process? That, that, that every year, the school system, you can, you can name lots of line items in various departments where there's scrimping and saving and, and not having enough money to do what they need to do. But yet we have a budget that every year we end up with significant surpluses. Tell me what's wrong with that picture? I, I don't understand it. I've never understood it since the day I've been on the board. I don't understand how we, how we build a budget. I understand how it's done, but it makes no sense to me and never has. There, it's almost like it's absent of, I understand the state is always gonna give, do what the state does. But that, that doesn't necessarily mean the county has to do what it's always done. So we just have this very sterile, really cool formula, right? What, what's absent there is sometimes you actually have to build a budget based on needs, too. And so my argument is, the next time we build a budget, you know, we, we should actually show the guys who have the purse strings what we're not able to do, given the way that we build a budget. I mean, does, am I wrong? I mean, I don't understand the way we do it. And any, the business I worked in, the business you worked in, when you build budgets, there is, there is a need, you know, that these are needs-based budgets. I'm sure you do the same thing at the bank. We don't, I don't understand the way we do it. I don't understand how we, how we scrimp and save and don't fund things we need to fund. But every year we have surpluses that, that is only, we're only allowed to use for capital projects. I don't understand it. So enough said.
Um, so in order this year to bring this, um, I guess, new program up and running, we have typically in this fund, we have had a little bit of income from selling the books, uh, from prior years. And a teeny bit from damaged bu, damaged, uh, books. The majority came from the VDOE. And the VDOE has a certain amount that, uh, they show as being a match. And we've been compliant with the VDOE in the past. However, I would like to be much more, um, upfront with it and just take that match for this year and throw it into this fund to help them, um, adopt the items that they would like to take care of in twenty twenty-two. It's not gonna fully fund everything that we need, but at least it'll get the ball rolling and get us to start putting some money into that fund and get us down that, that path.
As you can see, what we're, what we're proposing in the instructional resource fund for this next year would be, um, we're, we've got some recurring costs in some of the digital content that we have for English Language Arts. And that's K-12. That's, that's kindergarten through twelfth grade. That's the two hundred thousand that you see every year. Those are subscriptions and online digital resources that, that we adopted. The English Language and World, um, um, ELL and World Languages, uh, they've got some needs in, I think it's, if I remember correctly, Spanish and French are, there's just some resources that are completely out of date that really aren't usable anymore. So they're, they would like to adopt a new resources for those, and I think we need to do that. And then science is due. Uh, we're gonna be adopting science resources this spring and bringing that to you guys this summer. Um, and really, if you look at it, here's how, here's how I kind of did the pricing. It, if you look, it's consistently about, it averages out to about a hundred and forty dollars per student for a seven-year period of time, if that makes sense. That gets you a textbook in most cases and seven years of whatever digital content they have that you can load on laptops and access to those things over. If you multiply that then times about thirteen thousand, which is our students K through twelve, that's where you come up with about a hun, one point seven million dollars every time you adopt for materials for those things. So what we've done with science is we've spread that out over two years. We still have, like at the high school, we've got, you know, hardbound textbooks that kids can still use. Hopefully, again, the, the kicker often becomes the digital content to make sure that's still accessible and still usable. Um, and honestly, our teachers do a great job of going out and finding their own stuff, too. They, that's one of the things they have learned to do over the years. When you weren't able to get them new material all the time, you go out and you, you find some of your own things. And our teachers will continue to do that. But I think certainly with our, you know, our technology fund and all the great things that Mr. Terry does, getting the hardware to our students, it'd be great to then make sure we have current software for each of the programs we have as well. So what we are proposing is to kind of split that out and, and adopt, or not adopt. We'd adopt it all this year, but then purchase it over the next two years for the science program. And that's, those are K-12 numbers. And then you can kind of see each year, and his, history would be a two thousand twenty-four adoption. That's where you see that large budget expense. Math would come up in two thousand twenty-five. And then, of course, English comes up again in two thousand twenty-eight. That's seven years from where we are right now.
Does the digital cost us anything for those years?
It's, it's, it's usually, again, because it's a seven-year cycle, usually when you enter into those contracts, that's the agreement. You get a textbook and seven years of digital content. Which the only caveat there is, if then at the end of the seven years, you can only afford three-quarters of what you want to replace, then you've got to work out a deal with that publisher, and hopefully that digital content, they'll give you another year until you can purchase a new seven years.
Okay. So the transfer from the general fund that this is based off of is about five fourteen seven eighty. And Chuck, if you go to the next page, what you'll see is under the twenty twenty-two column on the revenues coming in from the general fund, that's what we've plugged in there. Uh, so that's our big difference. I'm not gonna believe you're going over the details of this. I just wanted to have the information out there for you.
Okay.
If you wanna move on to the tech fund, Chuck? Sorry, I jumped ahead in mine. So yeah, go ahead to the fleet fund. So this is a schedule that you should be used to seeing. However, I may have made it bigger by turning it sideways so that the columns lined up with every other schedule that we have for replacement. Um, Mr. Lowe has done a great job working with the transportation department. And we have, in this line, uh, for next year, we are looking at purchasing seven new buses, um, and eight, uh, other vehicles. So in the other vehicle column, the one, one-ton work truck, I know there is, uh, some positions. Oh, great. Do you wanna come in and talk about this?
I can help you along if you want, sure.
Yeah, if you wanna. I didn't see you pop in.
Yeah, I'm all the way.
Uh, I think-
You can sit here. That way you've got a seat and a microphone. Okay.
I don't want to steal your thunder.
He wouldn't mind.
He's doing a great job.
While he's doing that, if you recall, the fleet replacement fund up until just recently was only buses. And so we've gotten smarter about that to say, look, if we're gonna hire a new HVAC tech, guess what? They need a truck to drive. So I hand it off to you.
Sure. So, so last year, we were only able to buy three new vehicles because, because of the issues that we were having with, with budget and, and COVID and things like that. So we're, really, we're, we're starting fresh next year. And on a normal year, we would want to purchase ten new buses per year to be able to replace every bus every fifteen years. And it's actually, uh, it's actually now, uh, ten point one buses or something like that, because we have a hundred and fifty-eight buses, counting our activity buses. So we felt like with the budget that we had, this, this is a really good start for next year to get back into the groove of replacing some buses, uh, that need to be replaced. I think, what do we have there? We have, uh, seven and two special needs buses. And then we have a multitude of maintenance and transportation trucks that need to be replaced. And that, that's a big need right now. That, that's one of our biggest needs. And it's not just to provide vehicles to new employees that we've hired over the last, uh, year or two. We, we're doing a pretty good job of, of utilizing spare vehicles and things like that. But the biggest issue is the, the older ones falling apart. Uh, we have three in the shop right now that are just, uh, there's, there's no reason to even spend the money to fix them because they're in such poor shape. So we have those three individuals using spare vehicles right now. Uh, we had a truck that, uh, for instance, had a toolbox fall through the bed of a truck going down the interstate. So it, it's just, we have some vehicles like that. Uh, we're, we're, we're working it out. We're, um, we're shifting around who has what to make it work best for their job description. Uh, but this would be a really good start, uh, next, next year. Hopefully, when July one comes, I'm hoping to have the order out for the new vehicles so we can get them replaced as soon as possible. Um, but, and then, um, what we did do is, what we felt like we couldn't get next year, we backed up into the following year. So that's why that, that following year's budget is a little bit more. And that way, we, we're playing a little bit of catch-up, but we feel like this is a good plan. It takes care of a hundred and ten fleet vehicles over the next fifteen years and, and a hundred and fifty-eight buses. Or, I'm sorry, the next fifteen years. Did I say ten? It's next fifteen.
And the efficiency of not sending two people out in one vehicle.
That, that's correct. And there are some cases where we can do that. And instead of, and that's how we're, that's how we're getting by right now. Instead of sending two vehicles with two people to one job, for instance, where you might have two HVAC techs, uh, working on one job, we're using, we're starting to combine those folks. We're being more efficient in sending two people per, per vehicle when needed, instead of having two vehicles or four vehicles on one job site. So, so we're, we're reallocating vehicles based on needs in, in the department. And that's a tough process, especially when you have guys who've had vehicles for as long as they've been here, all to themselves.
So based off of that and, and their look at scheduling out and getting us back on track with our fleet replacement, uh, schedule, um, we only put in here, because we are carrying- forward, if you recall, we just finished an audit and carried forward seven hundred and one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars in the fleet fund, and we have no plans to use it in the current year. And so we're gonna build that into the plan to use it next year, which would then, um, we're car- we're asking to only put six hundred and seventy-five thousand in, which is, if you recall, the amount that we took out of the transfer to this because of COVID. So we're just trying to get back to where we were before COVID. Now, in out years, we will be raising that to try and get us up to a, a level dollar amount. And what we're trying to do with all of these, uh, replacement plans is really just get that transfer to a level that we're not spiking and increasing it and decreasing it. We, we get it to a level amount that it may have a little more buffer in there some years, but you can certainly pay off when you get to those really, uh, big spike years without a problem.
That over, would that catch us up to where we need to be?
I, I don't, I don't think, no.
Okay.
I, I, I think Mr. Lowe and I have talked and I think we really pushed things out a little bit, um, because I, I wasn't sure how much money we could really put through here. And so I felt like a good amount to put in here was the six seventy-five.
So how, how long does it take to catch us up to where we?
Well, we, we have next year as making up for this year and next year. So hopefully, we, we have a better year and a budget next year as we reevaluate our numbers. I feel comfortable with this start. It, it, it allows us to keep operating and actually replace a few vehicles and add some new vehicles. So that, that's, that's a big plus because right now, we're struggling. So that's a, that, that gets us a good start. Um, next year, the 2023 year will be a big year for us where we'll need to replace a significant amount of vehicles, um, based on mileage and, and, and the buses, we're gonna start ca- will get caught up. I think it was three years before we got back into our, uh, steady plan of ten buses a year, every year. Right now, you know, we're, we're a little behind, but the bus, but the buses we have right now are, are, um, they're not getting that excessive work this year that they typically get either. But we, um, we're pretty comfortable with where we're at. And, and we feel like this budget amount we're getting this year is, is adequate, especially after last year where we didn't get anything. So we're, we're grateful for, for this. We wish it could be more, don't get us wrong. I mean, what's like, anything you can give us? But this is, and I, and I did tell Susan, we, we worked through this and I told her this is the minimum of what, what we could, we could, we could get and, and, and be able to be, uh, operational and, 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 and work efficiently. So I feel good about this. I'll feel even better next year when we, when we, when we get back to a, to a better spending level.
Thank you.
So then that six seventy-five, if you go to the next page, Chuck? You'll see is the transfer from the general fund, which is then created six seventy-five. All right? So now it's, now we can get into the technology replacement fund. Um, this one is going to hurt a little bit more, uh, with everything going on. And, um, we knew this was gonna happen because when, when I brought this to you last year, we were trying to get extra funding put in there last year, but unfortunately, we, we didn't have enough to, to add more funding last year. And then we had to turn around and slash part of what we had as a, a basic beginning transfer to the fund. Uh, so it, it is no surprise that this is a, a large chunk. You can see the list of items that are on here. Just for your information, the equipment leases that are on here, all but one of those leases for next year, we are already entered into multi-year leases. And so there are obligations that are recurring on an annual basis. Um, and the radio lease is a BDA lease that was budgeted in the general fund last year, and we've moved it over to this fund to get it with all the leases so that we have contained every cha- technology lease in one place so that the transfer over from the general fund won't take care of this on an annual basis. Um, the IP telephony is related to Cisco Jabber that was necessary, uh, to do a lot of the, um, remote, uh, teaching and speaking and communications with the parents and having the ability to use the laptops, which has been really nice for everyone, um, to call parents, uh, and students and, and work remotely with the students. We've got the typical network. Mr. Terry went in and, uh, did a good job of isolating licensure costs and pulled them out of the other costs that were in here, like with the servers. They have pure server costs and then some licensure costs. And in the past, they were meshed in and now they're pulled apart. Um, so that's just good, uh, details in here. To fund the technology replacement, uh, plan, we do have several large ticket items that we put in here. We've got the state, uh, grant of seven twenty-six. We had a new line item last year, the state infrastructure and operations fund, and a certain percentage had to be set aside, uh, for, uh, uses that, uh, were directly related to infrastructure and operations in a certain way. And we carved that out and dropped it into this fund, uh, to help us with the technology case it, we, this was an all what's spent for that. The E-rate, we get that from the federal governments based on networking and servers that, and wireless, uh, purchases that we make. We have, uh, typically, uh, when we're rotating our laptops, we sell the oldest batch of laptops and get a little bit of money. So we have a little money from that and a, a little EBS lease and, uh, some other minor items. And so the transfer from the general fund for next year is one point nine seven three. Um, and you can see we have a beginning balance of six eighty-nine, and that's cutting it really close. That's budgeting us almost using everything that we have. That's only leaving a fifteen thousand dollar buffer in here, which is really close. So if you go to the next, and I don't know, um, Mr. Terry, if you wanted to make any other comments about?
No.
Uh, no, you did a great job. And you, this is a traditional, uh, technology budget year. It's, uh, focusing on physical security and cybersecurity, uh, but everything else is kinda maintained the way we have it. Thanks.
Excuse me. What would the plans be for the ending fund balance that we've got from 2023 through 2027 on this chart? How do, how do we, how do we make up that, all those negative numbers continuing to increase? Replacement needs and, and the funds, funding sources aren't even close to each other.
That's gonna have to be.
You just made my point, too, about, about, you know, when we, when we start talking about what we need, I think some numbers, we need to present some numbers to say, hey, look, you know, you know, I'm, I'm, this formula we have makes no sense to me. That's a great start, but if you constantly have charts like this put in front of you, I mean, yeah, why are we doing this? Makes no sense.
And then you got a major model capital.
Yeah. So there's a funding issue. Now, part of it's the state and some of it's the county, but, and these are things that, you know, when I, that somehow people that need to understand what the funding situation is like in our school system and what we don't do because we don't have the funding. And that message needs to get delivered.
And this is a key fund, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. Well, and as many, and, yeah, many are.
Not that they all aren't, but.
Yeah, right, I agree.
What is our plan going forward? You know, I'm, I expected that school will be back to normal next year. What is our plan next year with the, uh, let's, we'll, let's call it our laptop, optional laptop insurance fee? I mean.
We did not fill that in. We built this budget not charging the fee again.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, I think we should give the parent, I mean, my, my theory, if we're truly using it as insurance, I mean, as it stands right now, I mean, if, well, that's a topic for another day.
What, um, you know, what we know we needed to do is to look at some different models in terms of true, like, you know, insurance types of things and relook at what we charge people for actual damage or loss and that kinda stuff. So, uh, still gathering some information on that, but, uh, to Susan's point, I think what we know is that we can't continue, uh, you know, with the old model.
Right.
Yeah, and Mr. Terry and I have had some, some long conversations on this. And I don't know that charging an optional insurance to a parent would be any way, um, a good use of our resources, because we don't have a way to track it. We don't have a way to make sure that if the kid A breaks his laptop, did that kid pay? And how do we track all of that? So it would be very labor-intensive, and I don't think we have the, the structure in place to be able to do that. So we, we didn't even include that as part of the, the revenue funding here. So if you go to the next page, then you'll see the one point nine here. Now, the effect that's gonna be to the general fund is not the one point five in here because, as I said, that one BDA lease, Mr. Terry had already budgeted in the budget. So that three hundred and twenty-six thousand is just gonna be a transfer from the, it already is budgeted. So we're just gonna move that into this line item to transfer. So really, we're looking at one point two million to go into this fund of new money. So then, if you're ready to move on to the.
Oh, yes.
Project fund? Um, oh, that laptop fund is just for informational purposes. I don't know, that's been closed. So keep going. Okay. So with the CIP, this is the one that you had adopted, um, I literally found out at three forty-five today, the, the county has actually moved this project to this year. And so I would like to bring this back to your approval.
What, what project is it? I'm not looking.
That's the HR and payroll software project. So instead of, uh, spending the four hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars in twenty-two, they're gonna do that, finish that project in twenty-three.
This is the one that was started, was it last year?
Yes.
Of the year? Okay.
Yeah. But it's a very long process.
Right.
And there are multiple modules that are involved. And so what we'll end up doing, if it is agreeable to you, is I'll move the four forty-four over to twenty twenty-three and then shift the funds from the Kundip and the Blenheim Cove over. So it'll just be a swap between these projects, if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, so don't forget that number, oh, you went too fast. That number fifteen oh ninety-four five ninety-two, 'cause that'll be the number that you'll see on the financial statement later on. But in this, on the second line is our capital maintenance program. And then the general fund transfer at the bottom, you'll see the one million up and one million down. So if you go to the next page. Thank you, Chuck. So on here, um, Mr. Lowe and Mr. Meacham, uh, took a look at the CMP and we've got that scheduled out here so you can see, um, where they're planning to spend their million for the, uh, next ten years. So then if you go into the financial side, so this first page is the revenues, and since we're using some carryover money, the thirteen, um, point eight million under the 2022 budget is, is different from this capital. The first group is the capital improvement plan. And so that difference from what you saw is just what we're using out of our cap- our major capital reserves. In addition to the capital improvement plan, we do have some funds coming in from the county for, uh, Vogel Stadium and a transfer from our general fund for the eighty-five thousand. Go to the next page, please.
Oh, sorry.
That eighty-five thousand will cover, down below, you'll see the William Bird, half of the Vogel turf and then all of the William Bird high turf and the music uniforms. All of those were taken out of the budget last year, and so I'm just trying to get them back into the budget. So they're gonna be an increase over last year's budget, but they've been in the budget for years before that. But the fifteen point oh nine four that I told you to look at, that is the, you can see the capital improvement plan tied to the financial statement up in the top half. And then the one point two five six difference down below is the major capital reserves that will be carried over from the prior year.
Okay.
All right? So then Chuck, if you wanna move on, so this is kind of our summary of all that we know at this point and all of the demands on the budget funds that are coming available. Right here, all of these are transfers that we discussed out of the previous four quarters. And so you'll be able to see all of those numbers in the other funds. This restricted revenues, this is the revenue portion out of the state related to, I'll remind you, the one point nine million, two percent bonus we would have to pay in order to recover that amount of money. Over here, these are all, this is the one set increase that we gave. So that would be what we need to build into the budget in order to keep everybody at the raise that we just gave them. And then all of these items right here were taken out of the budget last year as a differ roll with hopes of being put back into the budget this year. So that's why they are on this list. And then we already know we're gonna have fixed increases for our software that will include the financial system and the, um, payroll system and the HR system, that is just annual payments that we have to make for the licensures. And then the joint capital funding policy that we agreed on last year with the county that gets us to the additional bonding. That's a lot of numbers on the page.
Yep.
It's a lot of needs.
That's your list of needs.
Well, it's a start.
Yeah. Okay.
So then my last page is just to share with you, you know, like to give you the calendar of what's up next. The next thing on the docket is the general assembly convened on the thirteenth to whoever can lobby to get that bonus, um, retroactive to last year or this year, that would be very helpful to the school division.
Have we sent out calendar invitations on all these meetings or we're gonna do that?
Um.
So, yeah, 'cause.
These are just board meetings.
Oh, they're just, okay, they're not, uh, these are work sess- budget work sessions after board meetings, basically.
Um, I actually scheduled work sessions on the work session days.
Okay, good.
And so our next work session meeting will be February second.
Everything in blue is, is budget-related.
Oh, sounds good. All right, they're not new meetings.
I'm not gonna need to add, but.
Correct.
Yeah. And then back in March, if we need to do some work sessions after a regular school board meeting, we can. But basically, I've, I've, on the gold days are the days that will, um, the blue indicates what the session's on, but the gold days are the days that they mean.
Okay, all right.
So I tried to simplify it this year.
Sure.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Yes, very, very nice.
You really did.
Good job.
You could see it better.
All right, I believe that was the last item on the agenda, right? I do wanna, uh, suggest that we set a date for our annual strategic session and, and do that as soon as possible. And so, um, Angela, I, I'll ask you to send some dates out to have our, our annual, and any objections to having it here?
Not at all.
How about any, are you okay with that?
Thought we'd have it at your place, in the bar or something.
Well, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, before we head out, and I'm sure you will have no, hopefully no problem with this, within the next, say, two weeks, um, can you, now that you're assuming chair, can you give us an update on when our joint meeting will be with the board supervisors, please?
I would be glad to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Very good. All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Okay.
What are thoughts about January 14th meeting?